Okay, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is strong.
Okay, we'll start off our meeting with the public hearing agenda for the enrollment of non-resident students. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about that? If not, then I move to adjourn the hearing regarding enrollment of non-resident students. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the hearing regarding enrollment of non-resident students. Is there any further discussion?
What?
Yes.
Uh, those?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studville? Yes. Goodman? Yes. Motion passed.
Okay, and on to the regular consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve or to approve seconded agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Consent Agenda. Is there any further discussion?
What?
Yes.
Those?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studville? Yes. Goodman? Yes. Motion passed.
Okay, three point oh patron input. I think we have at least one. Okay, before we start, welcome to the patron portion of our board meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Except to ask clarifying questions, board members shall not interact with speakers at the public forum. Subject matter other than policy issues will be referred to the administration. Comments shall be limited to issues and not refer to personalities. Presentations must be relevant to the issue and promote the civil and dignity civility and dignity of the board meeting. Your participation in our public forum is a matter of public record. Did you, for any reason, feel compelled to speak about or against a person or persons? You may be held accountable for that. And Brad Sells.
No, I just wanted to come up, go through the process of running for school board and tell you all thank you for the job that you do. I think a lot goes into it, and I think in the process of it, it really, it's a humbling experience to know. We have three board members who wanted to rerun after going through it for four years, which I think sets an extremely awesome precedence for our school and the continuity that our school has. You know, I think, and I, I just want to come in, I guess, a motion of support and just super excited for what we're doing at Lewisburg. I love to send my, my kids here. There's a reason I send my kids to this school, and I think the foundation that you all set forth by continually to protect the rights of our kids and want to be up here, you know, day in, day out, dealing with all the things that come with being a school board member. You know, I just wanted to come and say thank you, that I appreciate the job that you guys do. Congratulate those of you that ran again, three of you, that want to continue to support our kids and Pat as well. Congratulations to him, I talked to him, but I just wanted to come up and say that, say thank you, guys. I, I plan to still continue to watch. I love that you have everything online for everybody to see regardless of what they got going on. I just wanted to say thank you, so thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, discussion, four point one, teaching and learning presentation.
All right, we have a lot under teaching and learning tonight, but it is American education. We, I think it's very fitting that tonight the board will be able to hear from some of our awesome students, our great staff that make Lewisburg great. So it's just really cool, as we were setting the agenda, that today starts American Education Week, and we'll be celebrating it all week, which we should, celebrate our successes across the district. And tonight you get to hear from students and, and staff and, and see some pictures here in a little bit from, from our new gun club. You'll get to listen to FFA and the awards we give at Nationals. Adrian and FBLA just got back from Rhode Island and so just a lot of awesome things. So just very fitting. Next month, Mr. Tappin will share with the board our assessment scores, our state assessment scores, which are awesome, and how our ACT scores have improved while the state continues to falter in that. So just a little preview of what's going to come in December, some more great information for the board as well. But we're going to start, Dr. Van Rine is going to introduce her guest to the board.
All right, good evening, and thanks for just a few minutes to be able to present. We do have a wonderful building that does some amazing things with kids. You will hear a lot about scores upcoming, how we're doing it well in the classroom, but I think it's great sometimes just to bring to your attention some of the other things that are going on. Something that I'm really passionate about is serving students myself when they have ideas of things that they want to do, like projects they want to lead or anything that they bring to the table. And so Addie Stos had a wonderful idea that she worked really hard at that put our school in a positive light, so I thought it would be really nice for her to be able to share a little bit more about what she did. So we're matching t-shirts, she's got a speech written, she's amazing and a blessing to our school, and so you got to.
Okay, hi, guys. I'm Addie Stos. I'm a junior, and I've been in the school district since preschool. I'm involved in bands, select choir, SCC LA, NHS, and a part of softball basketball teams. So I'm here to-
So she was at practice at five thirty this morning.
I was.
And here she is.
Five thirty A.M. No, I'm here, it's okay. I'm here to tell you about the suicide prevention event I organized that was held at the highest school in September. So I'm very passionate about this because of the amount of teenagers that struggle with their mental health every day. If you didn't know, one in every five high school students have seriously considered committing suicide, so that's just a statistic to put out there. With so many people struggling, it was my goal to raise awareness and particular educate everyone on the shortened National Suicide Prevention and Crisis Hotline phone number. It is, it has been shortened to just nine eight eight, and if you're going to take anything away from this, remember nine eight eight, because it could save anyone's life, you can call for anyone else, you can call for yourself, you can text. It's a really good resource. Okay. Choosing a theme for this project was the first goal. The main message I wanted to get out there was that everyone is worth celebrating and everyone's important, so you're worth celebrating, that's what we came up with. So our day that we did everything was September twenty-first. We had many activities to do. We provided all LHS staff with this t-shirt right here that they all got to wear, as well as the volleyball team girls. At lunch, there was cake served to every student in celebration, just part of our little theme. On the side in the lunchroom, there was a resource table with nine eight eight cords and affirmation bracelets, and we also made like a sticky note wall. And so all of our students got to write encouraging messages to each other, and we got to display that for a while, so that was really fun. I also got to speak, just give a short little speech at every lunch, telling them the purpose of what we're doing that day and just getting some information out there. After school is when our biggest event happened, which was at the volleyball game that night. We had the same table from lunch just over by the concession, so people could come over, see what we were doing, ask questions. We also had t-shirts given away to students. What else? In between matches, I also spoke there and just told everyone in attendance what was going on, shared about nine eight eight, and just told what was going on at the school. We also handed out goodie bags and thank you bags to all three volleyball teams that were there, just to thank them for helping making the event so successful and being supportive in it. Just for all of these activities, I reached out to friends, families, and local businesses, and was able to raise a total of thirty-two hundred dollars to provide everything we did. And nearly everyone I contacted was excited and willing to support this cause, which was really great to see. Overall, this experience was super successful and really well received by students and staff and the community. And lastly, I'd like to thank Miss Henry, because she went above and beyond not only helping me and supporting me with my ideas, but putting her own personal time into it and just the amount of emails we've sent back and forth, please, a lot. So thank her for that, and thank you guys for letting me talk about this. I'm very excited to continue next year and hopefully help someone carry it on, so thank you very much.
We'll continue with a, some more shout outs to some students and these JPGs as I read about this, Mrs. Yoder will show. So as you guys know, our Wildcat Shooting Club is brand new this year, and Micah Drake, one of our parent volunteers for this, finished some information. So I'll just highlight what he said as Jenny goes through these pictures. So obviously, our first fall season was completed. We had twenty-four students from LHS and twenty students from LMS, so forty-four students, fourteen thousand rounds of shotgun shells, all without, all without a single safety incident, which is great. Micah says that him and everyone, all the adults, were impressed with the focus and attention to detail that our students showed. They took safety very seriously. Says the spring season will have, if, if the Nationals would have been now, we would have had already five LHS students qualify for national championships in Michigan, but state and Nationals are in the spring. Due to the size of our organization, so this is good or bad, they were placed in the highest conference in the state because it's based off, just like other sports, how big, so right out of the gate, forty-four, and so we're one of the larger gun clubs. He says he was able to also incorporate the club through Kansas, and he has registered as a five oh one C three, which will help with any fundraising and other items that they need to do. Spring season will kick off in the middle of March. He anticipates having over sixty students, students participating. Much more competitive season lasting nine weeks, state championship in Wichita in June, and a national championship in Michigan in July. So just want to let you guys know, I know Micah came and asked for your support, and you can see the Wildcat Gun Club with our shirts and, but just wanted to give you some information on that, and definitely a shout out to Micah, other parents, and our students that have joined that, so.
Great.
Uh, next, I'm going to invite Broadmore, so Cindy Apple and whoever else up to the podium to, is it about a situation to happen at Broadmore that just also shows how awesome our, our staff can be in any situation?
Absolutely, I'll let them stand up, come up with me. So we had a medical emergency on October eleventh. We had a parent that went into cardiac arrest of some sort. I don't know all the specifics, all the right terminology, Nurse Candace, but a lot of things went really, really well that day, and big shout out to our staff, and I see that Chief is here, Chief Reading House as well. They just, we, you know, went into, went into motion as soon as the event happened. Everybody kind of jumped to action and handled everything very well. Happy to report that the patient is doing well and recovering, and I just wanted to recognize them in front of you. I was trying to think of like really what to say, and I had sent this email that evening to the whole staff, so I'm going to read it and try not to cry, because I get a little emotional. So I love this quote from Mr. Rogers that says, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.' I saw this today, and I saw the fast work of our office staff to get help. I saw Camry run to get help. I saw Candace begin medical treatment. I saw Tammy come to get me. I saw Chief Reading House and Brooke come help in the office. They happened to be there for five or safety week, it was divine intervention. I saw Angela on the phone with nine-one-one. I saw Jen comforting the patient's family and making sure doors were open. I saw Sarah comforting and maintaining the office. I saw Kelly standing by ready. I saw adults in the gym maintaining normalcy for our students. I saw teachers comforting one another and ready to help as needed. Even if you were in your team meeting and you feel like you didn't do anything, you maintained normalcy and you showed the kids that we can do things that are not typical, we can have lockdowns that are not drill, we can still have a day that is productive and fun and good. I saw teamwork today. I saw family today. Sorry. I cannot say it enough, and after today, it just solidifies what we know. We are darn lucky to be at Broadmore. I know I am right where I need to be with the people I need in my life. And I was talking to someone today, and he said, "Well, it takes a village, right?" And I said, "It does." And today, our adults, our adults needed a village, and the village showed up. You are my village, and I hope I can be yours." And I just want you guys to recognize them, sorry, I get emotional. It was emotional, it was, like I said, everything worked out just well, these people were amazing, amazing, and we saved a life that day. And so just a huge shout out and a big round of applause.
You know, this year's theme is heart and soul, and so obviously it took that steps, heart and soul with someone's heart not working at that time to all come together. But as Cindy says, it takes a village. Every year, we take the CPR and AED training very seriously. The, the city and county help us on that. Candace is actually in charge of keeping our AEDs up to date. I don't necessarily like when she shows me the bill, how much it costs, because they do have a lifespan in the batteries, but she coordinates all that with our coaches. Each one of our schools has a crisis team, so many of them, so they know what's supposed to happen, whether it's a student or a staff member. In this case, as you heard, it was a parent just at a meeting, and so you just never know when we need to go into action, but when we do, we have the right people to, to do that. And so amazing, also why Cambry, well, Cambry is up here, Cambry Fleming is our Elementary Teacher of the Year for this.
I always just thought you cried to her saving lives.
And so she will be competing in Regional Three, April seventh, up in Overland Park, so she's completed the application, and so now they'll be reading those, and, and we wish her the best on that as well.
Thanks.
But that was a great day, just like every day, but it's those special events that happen that make us reflect how special a place we are. So definitely with the city's response, as always, whether it's a medical emergency or a safety issue, they are always there. In fact, I was delivering cakes yesterday for the schools, and I went to Rockville, and there was a police cruiser ride out front at two o'clock in the afternoon, but Nathan Bell was, as we've talked about in here, we have a new officer for the city, and two o'clock on Sunday, he is walking that new officer through all of our buildings. So he just wanted to come out and make sure, probably eat some cake, but make sure that I would, okay, I said, "Well, I imagine I had to know by now if something was going on on Sunday afternoon," but he was just showing our new officer, so, and I'm just great all around to keep our kids, staff, and, and community safe, so thank you, guys. Okay, next, we're going to go through our career tactical education program, and Mr. Tappin has been instrumental in putting this presentation together with the teachers. And then when like FFA gets up there, Jim and Jay, I'd like you to, to share with the board how well we did in Indianapolis again, so give me a little time to, if you can't rattle that off. And then when Adrian gets here, she's over in Paola right now, is a mom watching her daughter play, but she'll be here, and then she can share some information about them getting back from FBLA National Leadership Conference this past weekend as well, so Mr. Tappin, take it away.
All right, well, good evening, and, and as always, thank you for allowing me that opportunity to talk with you tonight. More often than not, it's usually about maybe test scores, curriculum regarding our core classes, but I'm really excited tonight to have the opportunity to talk about our career in technical education courses, because if we get kids ready for that post-secondary life, we need to make sure not only are they ready potentially for college, but a lot of them enter the workforce. And so we've got a dynamic group of teachers that are gonna, gonna talk to you about some of the classes that we offer our students, some of the licensure or certification programs and that our students can receive after going through their courses, but I'm going to talk from maybe a different perspective, and I shared a sheet with each of you, just to kind of give you an idea of what career and technical education courses look like in, in Kansas. KSDE has what's called career clusters, and there are sixteen clusters, as you can see, that fall into many ranges of different areas that kids may be interested in after they get out of high school. Within those sixteen career clusters, there's what almost or about thirty-five different pathways that students can choose from if teachers have or school districts have those opportunities for their students in their district or surrounding district. And if you just kind of go through, you can see some that might pique your own interest. For example, emergency fire and management. There's programs across the state where students go through high school, take their core classes, but rather than maybe taking those traditional electives that we think about, they can go into emergency and fire management. Or if you see on the far right, under transportation, distribution, and logistics, aviation management. If you can think of Wichita, they've got a lot of resources down there to offer those opportunities. But here in Lewisburg and here in Miami County, we have some opportunities as well, and I wanted to share that specifically, and if Miss Yoder, you can go to the next slide, you can see that our students have, or we offer, seven different pathways currently for our students to choose from. The ones with the asterisks at the bottom, those are not active right now, and as we've talked about before with the teacher shortage, if we don't have a teacher license to teach certain courses, then we're not able to offer pathways for our students. And so construction and design, manufacturing, mobile equipment management, although I, we have them approved through the state to offer, we, like a lot of other districts, are struggling to find teachers that are able to teach those courses for kids to go through those specific pathways. The other seven that you see, those are active pathways, and our teachers are going to come up and talk a little bit about those in a moment, but there's some other opportunities for our students outside of our building that you may or may not be aware of. If you go to the next slide, we have students that head over to Fort Scott Community College in Paola to take the CNA health courses. We also have one student this year going over there for criminal justice. We also have a couple students that do the welding program over in Fort Scott, uh, Paola, but Pleasanton has offered some courses as well, and we're busing students to and from either Paola or, or Pleasanton every day. And so there's opportunities not only within our district, but outside as well, that, that we help students get to those opportunities. The next one that I want to share with you is what actually makes up a pathway. When you look at how pathways are set up, they're into three different categories of courses, and so I chose the Comprehensive Agriculture Science Pathway, which is one that we offer here in Lewisburg, and the ones, courses that you see that are highlighted are the actual courses that Mr. Morgan or Mr. Hirons would be teaching for that pathway. The introductory course or introductory level, that introduction to agriculture, imagine being a freshman in college and you're taking that English one oh one type of course, that's that entry level course that students would take in that pathway. After that, they jump into horticulture, plant and animal science, and then they slide over if they're still interested, and then they start applying those skills and the knowledge that they've earned in the previous classes at a higher level. So as courses, kids or students go through the process, if we have introductory level students, they kind of are considered participants. As they move on and they get those two credits at the technical level, they become concentrators. If they go through the whole process, they become what's called completers in the eyes of the, of the state. And there's more than just taking those two courses at the end to become a completer. There's some certification tests that students have to take and some other things that the state has been adjusting over the last couple of years. But that's what it looks like from probably a more bigger perspective as the state looks at things, but as Dr. Bearman and I were talking, rather than me talking about each one of our different courses and pathways that we offer, our teachers are gracious enough to be here tonight, and I want to thank them for being here. They kind of know the order that they're going to come in, so I'm just going to introduce Mr. Rockmore and Mr. Wybarra. I don't think Mr. Rooney's here quite yet, he's at a basketball game, but he'll be here soon to talk with Ms. Lane. But Mr. Rockmore and Mr. Wybarra, they're the two that head our digital and media pathway. So I'm going to give them a couple of minutes, and I know Mr. Wybarra is going to get to teach in a class soon, so it might be short, but it'll be sweet.
Hi, I'm Mr. Wybarra. I teach debate forensics as well, post-public speaking, but I teach the audio and video course, which is kind of the introductory course for the digital media pathway, and then I also teach the video course, which is kind of the advanced level that students can take. Students can get certified in Adobe Premiere, we use Adobe software. We do Adobe, we do Premiere Pro, which is kind of an editing software for our video classes, so students at the end, when they complete the video course, they can take the certification to get certified in Premiere Pro, so that way when they go out into the workforce, jobs can pick them up right away, they know all the editing software, and they can just get right into that job. Some other interests I feel like students could really get a handle on is, we don't offer it, but like animation and like maybe interactive media, that could be something else on top of the digital media courses, kind of offer up more of a variety. I know Mr. Rooney's not here tonight, but he also teaches graphic design and other kinds of, I think coding and stuff like that, so, and that's some other courses that we can offer as far as animation and interactive media. Some of the things, just kind of going forward, I know our computers that we're using, and Mr. Rooney's computers, they're kind of dated, and so that's something as far as technology changes, and we're using DSLR cameras and everything, four K, eight K, things like that, technology's changing, like I said, that's something that we need to look at as far as newer computers to kind of keep up with the Adobe software, because the Adobe stuff as far as Photoshop, Premiere Pro, and all the other stuff that's on there, it takes a lot of memory, takes a lot of graphics for those computers, so just kind of newer computers for us to help the kids, you know, do what they need to. I know the video kids, I think it was a couple years ago last year, did all the promotional videos for the schools, so on the district website at the bottom, we did, my video kids did those promotional, so promoted schools, so they really enjoy that. And as we kind of move forward, we have, you know, cameras that we use, DSLR cameras we use for four K, and again, as technology changes, the kids need to be aware of that as, you know, they get out into the workforce. Some goals for our department is, again, to give those students the opportunity to get certified in kind of Adobe software, not just Premiere Pro, but I know Mr. Rooney, like I said, Photoshop, kids can get into certification for that in order to get out there and just get right into the workforce in that digital media pathway. And then Mr. Rockmore teaches, Jordan, you want to talk about that?
Just briefly, one thing I would add beyond the technical training and the skills is also a lot of the soft skills that we help develop. Even just today, helping kids give each other constructive criticism about, you know, getting upset, learning how to have those hard conversations. So I guess the only thing I would say is, we do also do a lot of workforce training, like these are soft skills beyond just the technology, but hopefully they can bring in the future jobs and have a good one.
So you mentioned a few things, and I'd like every group to come and kind of share the boards, and I know Mr. Tappin kind of primed you for some questions, but, so I'm hearing data, computers, cameras, animation class, anything, so for this digital media pathway, if you had your wish list, you know, is that it? Is there something else that would be missing?
For, for my video classes, and I'm sure Mr. Rooney can talk about this when he comes, basically just the computers and the software, kind of again, Adobe Premiere or Adobe software, if you're not familiar, uses a lot of graphics and a lot of kind of memory, and computers are computers we're using now, they, they hold up to a certain degree, but they do kind of crash on the, on the kids, and it's just something that as far as going forward, just kind of weaning out those computers and getting more set for, for graphic, graphic design, things like that.
How old are, is it the age of our computers or just like the capacity of those computers?
I feel like it's a little-
Not a technical person.
I feel it's a little bit of both. It's mainly just the computers can't keep up with all the Adobe software and just the graphics and all that, they just can't keep up.
Jordan, do you have anything, your wish list? Jordan, do you have anything on your wish list?
Yearbook, we're lucky enough where we are self-sustaining in everything except computers. So that would be the only thing is just long-term. Ours are a little bit newer than the ones Mr. Wybara's on, so we probably still have a good few years out of it. But unfortunately, with technology and the demands, it's just kind of every five, six years or so, it's part of the process changing.
With all the technology these days, is it a problem with our internet service that we get into our buildings? Or is that kind of slow sometimes too, or is that a problem?
It can be a little bit. I know like with the internet, it's the Adobe stuff does take the internet and everything. So that is a little bit, but it's mainly just the graphics and the computers to keep up as far as, you know, I wish we had a lot of, you know, I know we're a Mac school, but it'd be good because a lot of places that use graphic design stuff have Mac computers, computers that can keep up with the graphics.
How many kids are in the digital media pathway?
I've got two sections of video course, and then I've got one section of AB, which is the beginner course. I've got twenty in one class and then ten in the other. And I believe next semester, the AB course, the beginner course, I think I have about twenty-four, twenty-five in there. They've grown over the years, and then I think journalism, as far as numbers have grown.
We have about twenty kids in journalism this semester, and then we have about fourteen in yearbook currently, which is the digital media design profession.
And why I ask that, and we want to ask all of them, make sure that, you know, they share their concerns moving forward with the resources. Jim and Dave and I met with Endowment Association, and there are some potential grants out there available specifically for through technical. And so, you know, I think it's important before we look expanding our pathways, as Mr. Tappin showed, is let's make sure we have the Cadillac version of our existing ones. And so we'll be having some future meetings about that, and I'll be writing some future grants to hopefully get some of that. And so, but that's another reason, just to see what these teachers need to make sure that, because obviously, they need the best and brightest if the kids are going to take these classes. The kids aren't gonna take these classes if things are antiques or are not working, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we can go back to that previous, keep on that one slide if you don't want to.
Sorry.
No, you're great. Before Ms. Jenkins comes up, you might see, if you noticed, on that introduction class, the business essentials course, that. Nope, no, you're going the wrong way. There you go. Under digital media pathway, that business essentials class, about four years ago, we made some adjustments at the middle school, and all of our eighth-grade students take the business essentials course, which is kind of the gateway into some of our other pathways. So we've got our high school teachers here as well, but there's a lot of work that also starts at that middle school level as kids are starting to develop their individual plan of study. But one of the things that not a lot of school districts offer is that opportunity to get that introductory course out of the way, if you will, as eighth graders. And so you may see business essentials in some of the other pathways. And then over on the right-hand side, one of the things I do want to highlight is, these teachers teach a lot of different things. If you take a look at what Mr. Rooney or even Mr. Rockmore, Mr. Wybara, these teachers have multiple plans. And I'm not usually two or three plans. Some of them sometimes have a four or five different plans that they have. And so as you can imagine, that keeps them pretty busy, but they're doing a great job of it. I just thought that was important to highlight as well. Ms. Jenkins is our new teacher who will be talking about our restaurant and event management pathway.
Stole her from the other side of the county.
Then I'm Ms. Jenkins, my first year here teaching, and I'm very excited to be here at Lewisburg. So I teach just the culinary classes for family consumer sciences. So the business essentials class, as Mr. Tappin has been talking about, is done by the eighth grade. So I teach in the technical courses, culinary essentials, which is like my level-one class. They take it for one semester, which I'm looking at plans for the semester, and it's going by way too fast. I'm like, there's so much more I want to do with them. So they can take that for their first cooking class, and then they can take culinary arts, which is a one-year class. And in that class, I do the certification of serve-safe food handlers. So I'm happy to report all sixty-four of my students that took that test this year passed that, so they're certified with that certification. With that, they can take that to an employer if they already have a job, or they can take it to get a job in the food service industry and say, I'd like a little bit more money. I already have this training. I already know the food safety skills, and here's my proof. Once they take that class, they can take my applications course, which is culinary applications, and it is also a year-long class. That class this year, it's the first year it's been offered, but I'm offering the serve-safe food manager's certification. And that one is quite a bit more in-depth. So they will take that test, and hopefully we have a good pass percentage like the other one. They'll take that as their final in December. So that class is more to get them workplace experience. So that's kind of my goal with them right now. They haven't ever went out and did an internship. So my goal is maybe next semester or next year to get the students in that third-level class out of my classroom and into a business. This week, we're going to meet with our advisory board meeting, and I have invited the Timber Creek manager to come in. And I kind of mentioned, hey, I want to talk to you about having my students come and intern during the school day. Because that's kind of the purpose of that applications class, to get them more than just the experience in like my home-style kitchens in the classroom. So we do those tests. Needs, I have a lot of students, which is great. They need that experience. I grew up cooking with my mom in the 4H. A lot of these students didn't, so we have a wide variety of students. So more students need to take the classes. That's great. However, I run out of space for them, so I have four home-style kitchens and more students that can safely cook in a class period. I have to split up the classes into half can cook one day, half will cook the next day, which is, you know, we've blocked scheduling even farther away. So that takes quite a bit of effort and planning of when they're all going to cook. And then so half are in the kitchens, and that means half of the class is in the classroom side of my room, and they're doing lessons on their own because I need to attend to, safety-wise, the kids in the kitchen. So if you can imagine, if you've been around high school students, they don't like to get as much done if the teacher is over here in the kitchen side. So that's been a struggle, getting them to continue to work while I'm safely watching the kids around my oven. So what would be really helpful is if I had more kitchens. And that's something that I would like to see in the future, to be able to grow the program and just to be able to do more with the program. Because if I couldn't have the whole class cook every day, I could get a lot more done with them and teaching-wise.
So I don't know if you've been in her room, like maybe hospitality room at a wrestling tournament or whatever, but when you first walk in, it's the classroom portion, and the four kitchens are in the back. For example, maybe if the funding was acquired, maybe that entire room becomes, you know, a kitchen space. And then we have three classrooms along there, then Marissa's is in the middle, but then the first one kind of has been a health. And maybe that's, you know, her lecture hall, and then when she goes in there, it's an entire kitchen space. So that would be a large area, get into more culinary restaurant-style equipment versus. So if you've been in there, if you've been in there, it looks very similar to probably your kitchen. Well, it doesn't. Your kitchens are probably much nicer. You know, that's a forty-year-old kitchen, and we've done a few updates. And the ovens and stoves now are breaking, and so we continue to put money in that program because we need to, but long-term. And then you mentioned the great thing is another one of the grants that we're looking at through the Patterson Foundation. So Patterson, obviously, is through Cerner. But as she mentioned about going out and getting community partners, all of these pathways would love to do that. But she's full-time teaching, as Mr. Tappin said, all these prep she has to do. So one of the grants would be that we'd be able to hire that person, that that would be their position. They would go out and build these business partnerships, and so that one really intrigues me. And then they would be the conduit between the teachers, the counselors, the students, the families, the businesses, because we just don't have the time or capacity to do that. So as she's mentioned, she went out and talked to Scott at Timber Creek. That person would be able to do that, and she could focus on her classroom.
Yeah, find more businesses, because I think that's what I'm going to run into. I have twenty-five students in that class. I don't think there's places in Lewisburg for them all to go out and get that experience during the school day. That kind of brings up its own challenges, especially with them having a class like every other day. So, okay, you can have this free intern to work, but it's every other day and kind of weird hours depending on what time they have the class.
Anything else besides space?
My big one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Hirons and Mr. Morgan are gonna get started, but I think Dr. Bearman has the video.
Yeah, I don't know how many have seen this video, but obviously, we can brag till forever on Mr. Morgan's accomplishments. But this was on Channel Five, I believe, late May, Jim?
I don't know if that would be at all. I'm not sure what we're gonna hear.
Well, okay. Well, I'm surprised. No, but I think it's May of this year. Just spotlighted our FFA kids on Channel Five. Go ahead.
We are celebrating this week's best or worst start of the week. Today, we want to give a big congratulations to the Lewisburg Kansas High School Future Farmers of America Program. They've had a state champion for fifteen straight years and multiple champions for eleven straight years. This year is no exception. Check it out. There were four state champion teams, two state runners-up, one third place, and one eighth place. Holy smokes! A big congratulations to everyone involved.
Do you remember that video? Well, I was snooping on your Facebook page. It's on there.
This is to help kind of explain what we got here. So, you know, we have two in the ag pathways, two comprehensive ag and power structure. Ours is a real true pathway. You start out as freshmen in the intro to ag class and to move on. You have to be enrolled into that for the most part, ninety percent. Move-ins and some things like that are kid pleading his case, crying on my, crying on my shoulder. Yeah, I'm on in. I'll take. But it's a true pathway in that you start off with intro to ag, and then plant and animal science is the sophomore year. Then advanced plant and animal science is the junior year, and the ag biz management class is their senior year. And then, and they can branch into horticulture or into the ag mechanics classes here in their sophomore through senior years. Back in the day, they were called Ag One, Two, Three, and Four. When they went to pathways, they said, oh, we can't have those as names, so we had to, we powwowed as a state and came up with names. And I selected plant and animal science because I wanted a year-long class, and I wanted to maintain that progression from freshman through senior as a true pathway. And so we have plant and animal science and advanced plant and animal science, and that's how those came about. And they are, all of those are all year-long classes. So, and then in the power structure and technical area, again, intro, and then their junior year, ag mechanics. And their senior year, they can take ag mechanics two and/or agribusiness management. So that's how those work. Any questions on those classes?
And then, so my classes too, they're not necessarily fitting into the true pathways, simply because I am an ag teacher, teaching more of the shop classes. We've kind of tried to make it to somewhat of a pathway. So starting mine off with intro to industrial technology, that's the introductory-level course. It's mostly freshmen that are taking it, and that is kind of the gateway class to taking my other classes. Typically, at least how it's worked in my second-year teaching, sophomores that have taken intro to industrial technology are enrolling into introduction to welding, as well as small engines. And then they can also take ag structures, which is my, would probably be my technical level, upper woodshop class. And then after the students have taken introduction to welding, they can continue on with welding processes. And that's simply what I am offering with my abilities right now.
I'm glad Shade mentioned that, because many of you know in the room how our progressions went in that area. So years ago, we had, you know, Jim, Troy Stout, and Rodney. Well, when Troy Stout left to go into industry, we looked for that teacher. Colleges are not putting that certification out, and there was no one there. When Rodney retired, once again, we struggled with that pathway as well. Very few colleges do those types of degrees. And so we hired Shade out of K-State because there are, there are, there are still some kids that are wanting to go into ag ed. And so it's been tricky. It wasn't that we wanted to shelf those programs, but we could not find those certifications. And KSDE, especially these are funding courses, they don't let you just teach these. You have to have certification, or you can hire someone that was in the field and has, you know, thousands of hours in the trade. But those are tricky to find as well. So it wasn't the progression that necessarily we wanted to do, but that's kind of in the history since Troy left and then Rodney a few years ago. And so we're thrilled to have Shade, but that's why we now are kind of doubling up on the ag side. But as he just mentioned, he is limited to what he can do, not skill-wise. He could teach more, but we won't get any funding. The kids won't get any certifications for those as well. So I just want to remind the board kind of, that's probably about a five, six-year history in this, this area that we've had to go through.
Did they have to take the introduction to welding before they do the Fort Scott welding classes, or how does that work?
At the moment, no. Well, I'm not sure how exactly it's kind of panned out within now, but most of those students that are taking the Fort Scott program have taken a welding class here, I believe. I believe that's probably a requirement, but that's pretty much been freshly introduced this year.
It would be their introductory class for that pathway.
So on your paper there, where does the school district want to go with industrial tech program? That's something you guys, as a group, have to kind of think about. Leave it as it is temporarily with Mr. Hirons or whomever. Continue to try to hire an industrial arts instructor. Yeah, Pitt State and Fort Hayes are the only two that actually offer it, and they're offering, they had like two graduates last year, and both of them went to industry, as you know, for the obvious reason. But, and then the third option could be change classes to add titles and numbers. And we could, we could take those classes right there, for the most part, and create a, an ag pathway class and title and number it. The only real trip to that would be that industrial, that intro to industrial tech, these kids would have to be, to do, stay with the pathway, intro to ag science, because that's the only class, exploratory or intro, is the only introductory course accepted by the ag pathways. So getting the kids enrolled into that class so they continue on the pathway, or however, if you, if you want a true pathway. So that's the stumbling block there. And the state, you said, throws up barriers on, you know, why aren't they accepting ag graduates from K-State as an industrial arts instructor? You're not producing any. We could probably say that's a turf battle right now. So, you know, that's, that's, that's in the big building in Topeka, not on our end, because we would have done that, obviously. Certifications, he asked us to address certifications. So the, with certifications, it's been a few years, not that long, to me, anyway. This was the oldest of certifications up till, this says twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two. It was a horrible list. Is anyone here yet?
Yep.
Lane?
Yeah, they're here.
People backed that up. This was a horrible, we've talked about this for the last three years. This was a horrible list, terrible list. A lot, a lot of things on here that they didn't even offer. I mean, industry didn't even offer, especially in her area of business, different, different programs and things. Well, they finally, after enough complaining, I guess, switched to this, and this is brand-new, twenty twenty-three. And it's a much better list, a much more complete list, a much more up-to-date list. It still needs tweaking, but it was certainly better than this, what they were recommending. And there was nothing on here that was applicable, especially in ag. So I do want to address the Kansas Department of Ag certifications. They offer three. And this is offered through the Kansas Department of Ag. Okay, and this was set up about the same time we started Pathways. Okay, and this was set up about the same time we started pathways. And they offer three, general ag, plants, systems, and animal science. And I'm going to explain to you how nobody in 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 the field of agriculture is clamoring for this certification. There are over twelve thousand students enrolled in ag ed classes in Kansas, twelve thousand. Let's just take the third that might make it to their junior, senior year where you're going to be a completer, a concentrator, and be ready to take what's called the CPAS test. Okay, so that'd be four thousand students available to take, to to apply for the certification. The process last year or this year, last spring, less than seventy-five people took this test. I don't emphasize it because nobody's clamoring for this certification. Nobody's out there saying, hey, I gotta have a kid certified in one of these. And there's in twenty twenty-three, twenty-eight received general ag, six in animal science, and two in plant systems. It's a, it's a, it's a joke. Okay, how do you get this? How do you get this? And it would, you might be spending a whole lot of time doing something that would be meaningless to the students to get this certification. And uh that's just my feelings on it. Again, nobody's clamoring for this if there's only seventy-five people get to even take the test and way less than that actually getting the, getting that certification. And this come from uh my good friend at Kansas Department of Ag and also from our ag leader at Topeka, Mr. Guy Sholber. So I got those emails this week or last week now. But I I spammed to everybody, I wanted to know what you guys are doing for certifications out there in the state. Uh and then contacted them. I said, I need numbers because I'm going before the board. And so I'll give you that. As far as the rest of certification across the state, the welding certifications our kids are getting through uh the Fort Scott. Uh welding is one of those things, uh yeah, you can get a certification, but when you, if you go and get a job, they're going to have you recertify at the job. Uh you go up there to Webco and Olathe. Uh in fact, the same teacher that teaches at Fort Scott Pale is the same certifier up there. You know, you can walk out of Nevada uh welding school with a certificate, but they're going to have you recertify up there. Okay, you have to go through their certification process. So uh that's that. OSHA ten is really interesting. Uh I had a number, uh not number, number teachers. Uh Mr. Clark at Bueller does a great thing there and some people around Emporia. And I think that's, that's something we could look at. Through our welding program, they do get uh at Fort Scott, the OSHA ten, but uh it's something we might be able to offer. Bueller uh works with Hutch Community College and there's a two-day program. Uh they spend one day at the high school Hutch does and then they, Hutch takes the kids to to the actual community college and finishes up the. It's a OSHA ten is the ten certification. And uh Mr. Clark at Bueller says uh when his kids do go out for industry, employers do like to know they got a little bit of safety background. So that would be something that might be something that we could uh, you know, look at it as a certification option. Uh, you know, I don't know, when hell's Arigo Tech at Emporia, uh somebody mentioned that they're helping them do it. So I don't know if Johnson County or anybody else around here knows it, but it's something we can look at. The ones in bold, they're the next four, beef quality assurance, the tractor safety, the pesticide applicator, and the serve safe, which would be much of the ones that the fax department would be doing. Uh those were just added this year to this list. So uh now pesticide applicator, uh that's not an easy one. Uh that's one's going to take some background and I don't see a, uh you would have to be a senior plus to get pesticide applicator. But uh that's a really difficult one. I just looked up this tractor safety one. It's offered through Penn State. Uh they have a, they have a uh a curriculum. I didn't know anything about it. That might be an option. Beef quality assurance certainly could be an option. I have, I've thought a couple of different paths on that one. It's not real uh, it's not real hard. It's just going over how to handle cattle, how to give proper shots, how to take care of cattle and those kind of things. So uh that might be something that could be an option too down the road uh as as a certification. Uh all our four H kids have to go through a livestock quality assurance program if they sell in the sale. It's similar to that, only they 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 used to do separate ones pork and then he just decided in the state to do a total one. But it is not on this list. Livestock quality assurance is not on this list yet. So that's that. Then you ask about dual credit. Uh so I spent a lot of time this past week trying to get a hold of some ins on dual credit. Not much going out there in uh the ag land on dual credit. I did talk to uh Mr. Paulson at Allen County Community College this afternoon and uh how that's working through their school. Bueller does go through them. Basically, what you do is uh you enroll the kids in the class. It becomes a typical online class. And then you as a teacher, you either facilitate it, you help teach, or both, kind of that thing. Uh so that would be a dual credit option. I don't know exactly how we would dovetail all that into that, if we would choose that. I'm pretty set on my curriculum. I'm, if I'm proud of one thing, it's my curriculum. I don't want to blow my curriculum up just to get a piece of paper for a kid that's meaningful. Uh Jackson Olson told me on the drive to Indianapolis that his first test in ag engineer or electrical engineering, excuse me, intro to electrical engineering was everything he learned in ag mechanics when I taught electricity. And then Brayton Rugen is in a class called Introduction to Food Science. He said, Morgan, it's the exact same stuff you covered in food science. So uh it would have to be something really important for me to to blow up a curriculum. And I got kids coming back talking, telling me those kinds of things. So uh anyway, questions?
In your area, of course, you have a lot of square feet of the high school, both of you. So what would be your wishes for your programs? Not to change them, but uh make them
Make them better.
Have old equipment uh that Mr. Foot probably used, Jim, Morgan?
I I've saw, I've seen the equipment. I'm like, I use that.
Dual process welders would be a a great need. Uh ones that can do arc welding, MIG welding, possibly use dig welding. But I mean, those, those would be the ones that are kind of more industry-recognized. Definitely updating that welding shop. Um and then my wood shop, I mean, depending on, you know, what, how everything goes with the industrial technology program. We have a lot of good stuff in it. Um that planer has definitely been through multiple high schools and that is the number one need. A lot of modern platers are digital. You just set the number to what you want. You know, you want it to take off and you press the button and they run through. I bet if you went through um most modern cabinet shops, that's probably what you were going to see. Ours is definitely old school. It it still works, but it's, I have had a lot of issues with it. Had to replace, replace blades. I just, in-feed rollers aren't working on it. That would probably be my biggest need in the wood shop. And welders.
Do you have anything, Jim?
Those welders, we really, really, new welders. Yeah. Yeah, we uh now there's two of those lightning bolts that aren't, they're, they break, they cut out intermittent welding. I saw them a kid the other day and I said, let's just switch welder. Yeah, I know. This is one of those two. This must be the bad one. So.
So the plasma cutter, do we use, want it?
Which plasma cutter?
There's, yeah. Well, if you walked in.
CNC one?
CNC.
Well, that just becomes a finding time to get that thing back running, you know? Uh making sure the computer program's updated and that's just something we haven't been able to tackle.
Yeah, the computer programming and there's a a good, I know the actual welder part of it has been broke multiple times. I have a strong suspicion that it's broken again. Um and that's what's keeping us from using that. I know I'm unlimited on knowledge when it comes to that, so.
But would that be one or?
That would probably be.
Yeah, yeah, updating it.
Yeah.
Before we let you go, you just got back from Indy, so guys brag about our kids, how well they do.
Well, the same, as I mentioned on that videotape that you showed, that was awesome. Uh four teams that won. In in the FFA, you have to win a state to go, so it's, it's not easy to do. And uh Kansas is very competitive in areas. So anyway, we won the four. And as we took the four teams out, uh Mr. Hirons was poultry and you can name the name of people on that team.
Uh yeah, Lila Edwards, Wyatt Guetterman, Logan Stevens, and Hallie Knope were on that team. And they ended up placing uh sixth in the nation. So that was, that's awesome.
They, they, they uh, that's the highest we've ever placed in poultry.
They're sophomores. They were a freshman team.
Yeah, basically, they were, poultry's my freshman thing. And I do things way, way different than most ag teachers do. Uh at Lewisburg, for me, you compete one time and then you're done. And I started that, I don't know, in the mid nineties. Because doing the same contest year after year after year benefits the kids zero. Uh after, after they've learned the stuff, it only becomes hanging another plaque. And uh so I said, no, I'm not, you know, you take my class, you take plant science, you're going to learn this and then you're going to go compete in those events. I know the ag teacher at Lincoln, Arkansas, very, very well. He and I are good friends. And they win poultry in Arkansas a lot. And, you know, this was their team's fifteenth or sixteenth poultry contest. It was our team, our kid's sixth poultry contest. So uh anyway, if they want to work hard, they'll do well. And they did. Uh to get that next level just took double the amount of studying. To make the top four, you almost have to double your amount of studying. And uh I'm proud of what they did. You know, they gave the time they could give and uh and uh that was awesome. The food science team, I can remember everybody, Kylie Ballman, Fisher Skakel, Harry Karr Craft, and then Miles Boz. And uh they did super. Uh we brought on Miles uh because I had some, our state has a rule that you have to have fifty percent of your team on the team to make, to go to nationals. And I had some of the very similar kids on the dairy foods, milk quality team and on food science. And so uh after we won both of them, uh we went to Miles, say, hey, would you be our first person on our team? And he said, yeah, I'll do it. And he did a wonderful job, studied and 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 really worked really hard. And they were in the gold division and we are so proud of that. Uh to make gold division with everything. And the topic this year was really, really difficult. Uh their product development topic. And it was, it kind of shocked everybody, but uh they they overcame it, did really, really well. Uh the milk quality team then was uh Abby Christensen, Lila Edwards, Lola Edwards, excuse me, uh Brynlee Bower and Presley Yowes. And they did really wonderful. They were, they were uh tenth in the nation.
Yeah.
And uh and uh they did a great job. They studied hard. And again, to get any higher, we were just taking, there's a lot of good teams in there. The same teams there, Klondike, Texas, Prairie Central, Illinois, uh always there. And uh they competed right with them. And then finally, uh my nursery and landscape team uh was Brayden Brugan, Jackson Olson, and Dana Camille. And then Thursday night before we left, I get a phone call from a gentleman and he says, my baseball coach, he's going to let me go. And I was crestfallen. And he had planned on going all along, but um he's in college baseball. And so I used to be sent out an email or text to three kids and said, hey, man, I need a fourth person. All four scores count. And we got to have a fourth person to to make this thing. Uh for all the effort these kids would in, when any of you three would step up. And so the good Erin Apple texted me right back and said, I I I would like to try. And then she texted back ten minutes and said, I can go. And I, I, Erin was the one I obviously wanted because Erin's like really super smart to begin with. And uh and I knew she would be diligent, work hard and so. So she came in Friday and I gave her a whole bunch of stuff. And I gave her all my study PowerPoints and so I gave her some landscape drawings. She had to interpret a landscape drawing and I gave her some old tests and. And anyway, so we had, she studied Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So we load up Monday morning and we're all studying in the van. And uh it's obviously she's worked really hard by, she's answering all the questions, you know? And then we get out there and they study some more Monday night. And then Tuesday morning, we go to nursery up there by a hotel and walk through the nursery early in the morning and looking at plants for plant identification. And she's naming them off just as much as anybody. So we get back in the van and I think Erin had went inside to get a drink or something. And so I turned to the three, I said, so which one of you is Erin Beating? They're all go, oh, yeah, we know. And well, anyway, when the announcement was Erin made stage, she was in the top ten. She was, got seventh in the nation and she only had five days, four days to study. So uh I was overwhelmed by that and the team ended up seventh in the nation. So uh and it's because of Erin.
What's so cool, those kids he listed, they're not our K-12 kids anymore. Those are college kids. I mean, think of that they come back and go to Indianapolis with high schoolers and he has that happen every year. That is so neat.
And I tell them when they go to college, I said, look, you're in college now. I understand if you don't study this stuff. You know, this is secondary to me. You guys have been in college. I'm more happy, proud of you guys making that step. I said, you know, and I send them stuff every two weeks. I would, you know, hail them something or text them or hail them. You know, and uh, yeah, to have them come back is just, well, it just, it makes you feel good, you know? They're still interested in doing it. And uh so, but they were excited. So that was great. So. Gold division, all four. Uh you can look Eden Prairie, maybe. Our first, maybe they have four in the gold. There's not many, not many schools across the United States have four golds. Uh and they got five ag teachers there, so a little bit of advantage, but anyway, so.
But we have the best.
Anyway, thank you all. If you have any questions, sure, call her out and we'll try to have an advisory meeting uh sometime. So she's playing Monday, I play it on Monday night. She's playing next Monday night.
Ritz is going to come up and talk about early childhood, but just real quickly, kind of in between little things. Think about how much our kids have to choose when they have electives. You know, sometimes your kids, your own kids, I don't have anything to choose from. This is why it's so important to talk to our kids early in that late, in the freshman year or even in middle school, eighth grade, coming up with that plan of study. Because you can enroll in a whole lot of different classes, but if you start focusing on what your skills and interests are, these are kind of the results that you can get. So and the same thing's true in early childhood. So there you go.
Yeah, for sure. I don't know how to top this one.
He's been around a long time.
I'll try. Uh so, yeah, I'm Mrs. Morrow. Uh I'm the Early Childhood Pathway. Um I just want to say I'm super passionate about my pathway. Even if these students don't go into early childhood or education, a majority of them will be parents someday and they do get to take the knowledge that they um gain to it. I had a student reach out the other day. She is pregnant with her first child, former student, of course. And she just wanted to thank me for um preparing her for that next stage of her life. I think that meant a lot. Um so I do teach career and life planning. That is also an introductory course to, I believe, um the restaurant food management. Then I also do orientation to early childhood and foundations to early childhood. They're offered um every other year. So that's the class that they're going to take home to their babies and the empathy belly and the kids really enjoy it. And my favorite, I love, it's my um pride, is the application course where I have high school students go out to other schools and I want to thank our building principals to make that possible because without them, um they wouldn't get to have that valuable experience. So they get to go to other schools, um get hands-on experience with children. And a lot of them go into the class because they like kids, but sometimes at the end of it, they're like, man, I really, I think I'm open to being a teacher. And in a teacher shortage, that's great to hear. Certification-wise, we're looking into the paraprofessional certification. I'm working with the counseling department right now to see how we go about that. We haven't done it yet. Um I think it would give them a huge boost in their career or even look great on a resume anywhere. And yeah, also I teach interior design. Right now, that is not a pathway. Um I'm looking towards hopefully in the future to make that a pathway so we can offer a second level and maybe an application level that be, there's a high interest. Um I did take an interest survey with all of my interior design classes, if they'd be interested in another second level and a majority of them said yes. Um it'll be like semester-long classes. Yeah.
One thing uh that was so moving last year when Kendall Norberg was up for Teacher of the Year and one of the finalists, uh of course, those Teacher of the Year finalists and the Teacher of the Year two at Lewisburg. And Dr. Van Reen had set up a time that we went to her class. And these students that are now going to college to be teachers, I wish every one of our teachers would have heard what they said. I mean, it was just uh so moving to listen to those students that went through our system and now want to dedicate back as our teachers do. So that was really cool. And those were her kids in her classes. So what are your wishes? What are your wishes?
Um, the only thing I can think of is right now, some of our favorite projects we do, if you ever get a chance to look at the bulletin boards in the high school, we kind of make it a competition, so they get to do them every couple of months. Um, and we, we're lucky enough to get cricket machines a couple of years back. Um, the only issue is their Chromebooks don't, aren't able to download the software, so they have to use my school computer, like my laptop, to be able to use the cricket machines. And we have two cricket machines, but we can only use one at a time with my computer. So I'm hoping in the future we can maybe get iPads to be able to use with them. They also can hook up to the cricket machines, um, wirelessly, so that would be really nice, because there's not courts everywhere.
Your babies are doing great.
My babies are doing great, they're fine.
Probably seeing them at ball games, uh, maybe hurt, maybe hurt them at ball games. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. and Ms. Lane, Mr. Rooney, they've got two pathways. And, uh, between the two of them, I think they teach maybe eleven different classes.
Lots of classes.
Lots of classes, but they've done a great job, um. Ms. Lane's gonna hand out the materials and talk about a lot of different things, including some dual credit opportunities. Also gonna touch on, um, something we're gonna talk about next month, and that's the new high school graduation requirements and some of the adjustments. There's actually gonna need to be some adjustments made to our pathways from the state because of some of those, uh, new requirements that our Class twenty twenty-eight students are gonna have to take.
Um, I'm Mrs. Lane, I think pretty much me and Ms. Rooney. Um, so this is my eighth year at Lewisburg and Ms. Rooney's second year helping in the business department. Um, I just want to say, when I started at Lewisburg, there was not even an accounting class, because only two kids had signed up.
Hey, Adrian, can you step?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That way Richard doesn't have to.
Oh, sorry, Richard. So, when I started at, um, Lewisburg, only two kids had signed up for accounting that year. We didn't even have accounting, um, in the classroom. And this year, and every, like, the last few years, like this year I have forty-four kids in Accounting One and I have seventeen kids in Advanced Accounting. So just the leaps and bounds that we've made since, um, I started eight years ago. And then we added Mr. Rooney, like, our program is just continuing to grow. So we're super proud of our program, first of all. Uh, and we teach two pathways, we teach the finance pathway and we teach the business management pathway. Um, the introductory course is business essentials for both of the pathways. And it's also the introductory course for seven pathways at the high school. So it leads in to seven different pathways. And I say leads in because, uh, Ms. Hesser teaches it at our eighth grade level. So we got that done probably, I think, four years ago, where she's teaching every eighth grader business essentials. So as they're coming in to the high school, they're ready to go and start taking the technical courses um, versus having to take the first semester of the business essentials. So that's a great way to start high school. Um, I teach more the finance side of the pathway, and Ms. Rooney teaches more of the management side. Yes, some of them do overlap. Um, but I teach personal finance, personal consumer finance. Um, this class is taught through all students, so in your grades nine through twelve. So currently, I think I have twenty-six in the class, and they're all ages, so nine through twelve in the classroom. Um, next year that is changing, I put that on here, too. Um, so it is going to be actually a requirement for the twenty twenty-eight graduates and to have taken personal consumer finance before they graduate. So it's something that we're trying to figure out in our pathways and our schedules, where we're going to teach that class. Uh, I'm very proud of that curriculum, I would say. I had to teach that in the state of Missouri as well, so in the state of Missouri, it was required whenever I started. I taught in Missouri for eleven years. Uh, and then I've taught it in the, um, Lewisburg for eight years. So I've, overall, I figured out, I've taught it thirty-five times, personal finance. So like, I feel like I could teach it now, like, and I can pull my stuff up and go, kind of thing. So super proud of that curriculum. Uh, I also teach Accounting One, like I said, um, it's a full-year class. And then entrepreneurship, Ms. Rooney actually teaches entrepreneurship. And then the application level course for that is Advanced Accounting. Um, on this paper, we do have some notes by some of these classes. So the ones with asterisks are classes that we teach for college credit. So I teach, um, Accounting One and Advanced Accounting in the Finance Pathway, um, through Fort Scott Community College. And they are both for college credit. Um, the good thing about the business classes is they have been also free the past, every year I've taught them so far. So these kids can take them through Fort Scott, and then the state of Kansas pays for them. Um, the list changes a little bit every year that are gonna be the free classes, but every, every year that I've taught these courses, they have been free. So it's pretty awesome. So they get to take accounting and advanced accounting, and they can get six credit hours out of that, not paying any money. Um, and I have lots of kids that will email me and tell me, oh, my gosh, that's so much. Thank you for teaching me accounting, because I know what I'm doing when you walk into class. And so accounting is a tricky one, um, for starting in college and you're not knowing anything. So I know that they're glad that they have taken those classes. Uh, I also teach Intro to Business, they're at the bottom. Um, it's the asterisk class as well, so it is also for college credit through Fort Scott. Um, it's a really awesome course, um, it's only a semester long as well. So it's a semester of college credit for free. So a lot of juniors and seniors take that course. Um, it is not in one of our pathways, why I say that. So the Intro to Business class and the Business Essentials class are very similar. Um, with like the content, yes, this one is more rigorous, because we teach it to the older students. But like, what we teach is definitely, it's pretty much the same as what you would teach in Essentials, it's just at a higher level. So since we only teach Essentials at the middle school, students that maybe move in or like, are we as students that come, they would never be offered the Business Essentials. So they couldn't be a pathway completer. So like, with the Intro to Business, they could take that as they get older, and then they could still be considered a pathway completer. If that all makes sense, yes. Um, for the finance pathway, we've had completers the past six years, I would say. So, and we figured out that we have given them a cord to wear at graduation, since they are considered pathway completers for the finance pathway. Um, Kai Holson is also my advisory board president, and he has added to some of the endowment scholarships where students can, um, check if they've been a, a pathway completer. So they can check that box, and I'm not saying it's gonna sway anybody, but like, it, it's an option. So they can also check, I am the pathway completer, and they can put down what pathway they've completed. Um, so I think that helps. I think the kids getting to wear their cords at graduation, I know that seems super silly, but like, they want those cords. Like, they're like, I want to be a completer, where's my cord at, kind of thing. So they definitely appreciate getting those cords, um, for graduation.
Sure, uh, Business Management is also semester-long, uh, it's our first semester teaching it. This, we've got, I think, twenty-two in the class right now. It's kind of a deep dive into certain parts of HR, hiring, firing, um, the job application process, how to look for jobs, and then how a manager handles their day-to-day, uh, business. Been a fun class. Uh, Principles of Marketing is a year-long, again, college credit course. Um, I teach right now, I think sixteen in the class. Um, I've done the Personal Consumer Finance, but this year I have Entrepreneurship. I have one this semester and two next semester. Uh, Business Communication I did last year, which is where we tried to get, um, students certified in Excel, PowerPoint, and Word. Uh, I will say, the first week or so, I realized that they're so Chromebook-heavy, that I stopped and had to teach them how to use the desktop. Um, which is fine, it's, it's good, uh, but the struggles they were having was because they were so used to Chromebooks. But, and I told them, my twenty-five years in the corporate world, I never used Chromebook, Google Slides, it was all Microsoft. Um, so it was, it was interesting to get that tweaked. I, I think if I had to pick one piece out of that, I would probably drive more towards the Excel certification. Um, I know my son took an accounting class with Ms. Lane and called me during lunch one day and said, Dad, I just got a class, and I was the one who knew how to use Excel for accounting. And Ms. Lane had to be there, so we thanked her for that. So I, I think Excel, all three are important, but I think Excel, whether you're in accounting or just running reports, uh, which I did for years in sales, it's important on how to use some of the features of Excel that aren't in there, so. We taught all three of those, I think it's gonna be kind of every other year, every semester kind of thing, with Business Communications. But I do think it is a key course. Um, I also do digital media graphic design. Uh, graphic design is art credit, digital media goes more with Mr. Wibero and some of the things he does. But we try to get more of the advertising and digital media, we really focus on Adobe Photoshop. We're getting both of those, and kind of the how-to, uh, a lot of kids have been there, never even touching or know how to use it. Um, so we use that in my class also.
Do we have the capability to get kids certified in Excel?
Through Serport, we do.
Yes, so we've done this fourth year, I want to say, I don't know, I'm a little shocked, sorry. Fourth or fifth year. Uh, well, it was, actually, I know exactly what it was, it was the year of twenty twenty, that was the first year I did the certifications. Um, and then I know Mr. McGee did them one year, and you did, and Ms. Hubert did them one year, and you've done them one year. So this will be our fifth year to do the certifications. Uh, we do not teach Business Communications this year, and that's the course that we would do the certifications in. But I'm going to have my Advanced Accounting kids take the Excel certification this year. Whether they want to or not, they're gonna take it. And, um, I think that they probably will pass, because we do everything in Excel for Advanced Accounting. And we've decided that we're gonna have, offer it to our FBLA students. Because we think that they would definitely eat that stuff up, like a lot of the kids that are, um, in FBLA are ones that would love to do stuff like that, they want that on their resume. So we are going to offer it to our FBLA kids as well. So, and we, like we said, we think the Excel piece is probably the most important, but we could also do Word and PowerPoint, too, depending on where we're at with that. Um, the last class on the Business Management Pathway, the application course, is applied business development. We are teaching it this year, this is the first year we've taught it. Um, and this class is basically you're building a business. It's been very interesting, I'm gonna say. Uh, we have had some successes, we've had some failures. Um, but we have been running, um, inside of the school, we call it the grab-and-go cart. So students, it's in between classes, so it's four minutes and it's super fast, but they can come and they can grab snacks and drinks. Um, and we started off doing cash only, but we now have expanded and we can take credit cards, so that's exciting. So we're, we're getting there, we're doing good, we're gonna try to add merch to our, um, business endeavor. We, we're gonna make T-shirts, um, which we did make some T-shirts during football season. We did like the theme shirts for Friday night games, and we sold those. So we are doing the applic, Applied Business Development as well. So that will also mean we can have business management and entrepreneurship, um, completers as well as business finance. So some kids could get a cord for both, which I think is super awesome, that they could do that. Um, what else do we have? We did certifications. Um, okay, on the back, we put some goals for our, that we would like to see for our pathway. Um, I think one of our biggest things, like, because we do teach so many classes, we teach a lot of classes. So continue to create and develop curriculum is one of the big things. This year, we've been really focusing on management, because it's our new class that we've been teaching this year. Um, and not just even develop it, like, most of our curriculum is developed, we just want to update it and make sure that it's updated and, um, that the kids are getting what they need and they're, and we're teaching it the way that they can understand it. So that's the first one. The second one, um, expand class offerings to assist pathway completers. We are getting there with that. In the finance pathway, we would like to add another application course, because accounting isn't for everybody, and we know that. Like, some kids love it, some kids hate it, and we get that, like, we know it's not for everybody. So we would like to add, um, like, an investing class to the application course. So it would be just, it would be more finance versus accounting. So then that way we could have more completers. Um, and some kids that take accounting and they're like, oh, no, not taking that anymore, they might take a finance or take the investing class, so. Um, and I think a big thing for us is getting kids for college and career ready, especially with all these, um, life skills that they're learning, the Excel, the PowerPoint, the Word, just learning those skills. We think that's huge. Um, continue to grow our knowledge to professional development to ensure we are teaching relevant material. And then the last one, continue to educate the student body about FBLA and encourage membership, strive for excellence in our chapter with top-ten placement in Nationals. So we want to continue to grow FBLA, like, we think that that is, the program that we have built is, is really good, but we want to continue to build and expand, and we would like to, you know, get on the national stage as well, so.
So on that, just expecting you just returned from Providence, Rhode Island, your national leadership conference, so.
We did, so we went, um, Thursday and got back, we left Thursday morning at four AM and we got back Sunday morning at two AM. So it was a very short, but good trip. Um, we had, I thought we had a great time, like, I thought the kids actually, out of all the years I've taken kids, I thought this year I felt like I could see them, like, growing together, like, they... And I don't know if it's because it's a group that really aren't like friends necessarily outside of FBLA, but I definitely saw a change in them, like, they were definitely growing and bonding, and it was a really good conference. The second day that we, on Saturday, we sat and we listened to, um, some workshops, and they were all really good. Talking to kids about setting priorities and is it really worth making yourself so stressed out to do all these things? And I think it was really good for our kids to hear, like, they, a lot of them were like, oh, my gosh, yeah, like, maybe we should con, just concentrate on a few things versus expanding ourselves too wide. So like, I definitely think it was good for them. We got to walk around Providence and see some pretty sights, and we went to Brown University. The kids thought that was really neat, so it was a good trip, very good trip.
I know you shared your goals, but any, as you've heard, the others, so any wish lists? I mean, I know Richard just put up four big screen TVs.
So in my room, um, we got some grant money through the state of Kansas, and I just got four fifty-inch flat-screen TVs put in there. It's really awesome, so I have my big projector and then I have four, uh, flat screens. So I project like my notes when we're doing notes up, but then they also can like Chromecast to them. So if they're doing group projects, we do a lot of group stuff, and they can project like their project up, and then they all can work on it and they can see it versus like looking at it on their Chromebook. So it's been really neat, it's been interesting trying to learn how to do all that, but like, it's been, it's been really cool. Like, the kids enjoy it. Um, they definitely, I feel like, like that we have different options on screens, that they can see while we're doing notes or like lecture time versus like trying to see around kids or whatever. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a big game changer in my room, for sure.
But any other needs, wishes?
My room is a computer lab that has twenty-eight computers. And they're, they're all, they've been refurbished a few times. And to run the graphics that we use with Adobe and that suite, they're just, they're just, don't, don't keep up with it. Um, shuts down, locks up, it freezes. Um, the graphics cards and monitors are not reliable enough to do anything animation or do anything really beyond the basics um, with the, the stuff that we like to teach. So anything updated with those would be great, just larger memory, better graphic cards. Um, would love to go with, you know, maybe MacBooks or iPads on my, but they're also very great Dells and well, there was some other out there that can work just as well for what we want to be able to teach here. Um, but those things, just they've got to be, to me, to be more effective and efficient and productive when I teach students, those have got to be it.
Same computer lab that Mr. Wibero uses, is it different?
It's next to his.
Different rooms, but like same, same computers.
Anything else?
I got one question, did we win the basketball game?
We did win, yes, we beat Paul Pail, so that's always nice.
Seventh grade won, too.
Seventh grade won, too, yes.
It's always a good night when you beat Pail.
I think for me, like, a concern, and it's not like, with the personal finance, finance becoming required, in that, like, I think that that's maybe, in my head, I'm still trying to figure out, like, where that's gonna fit, I guess, because we're already teaching so many different things, and so like, that's definitely gonna be going back to, like, the drawing board for us to kind of see where we can fit that in. And I think that this program that we've built, like, is, I, of course, I don't want to give any of it up, like, you know, that's the, that's the thing, but like, I feel like, I think it's good that they have to take personal finance, I do, I think it's good. It's just, we'll have to figure out how to fit it in next year, so. But I do teach three blocks of it already, so I mean, that's, and I feel like if we could teach four, we could get a lot of kids in there. I mean, we, I could have twenty-eight in my room and twenty-eight in his room, that's a lot of kids we could teach at once, so. I think that's something we just have to figure out for us in the future.
And the graduation credits conversations are coming, uh, obviously, the state's gonna require it for incoming freshmen, but even on that class, uh, you know, there's some, doesn't necessarily, like, as we know, Mr. Morgan does so much in finance, so some students that take some of those classes potentially could count as well. I mean, there's some local decisions that can be made, as long as local boards transcript those, then those are state, those count, uh, as well, so. We have other offerings at the high school, that, so we don't have to flood them, because they're already, as you can see, doing so many things. But stay tuned on those upcoming conversations.
Well, thank you, guys.
All right, I know that took a long time, but that is a lot of kids and a lot of accomplishments and a lot of resources, and so thought that was very important, uh, which leads us into the next one, and we heard accounting. And so, uh, Sean Gordon is, is here to, uh, with Gordon, CPA. And we've engaged with Sean for a while. Uh, he used to work for Meisenhauser, our auditor that, uh, the school district used to engage with. But then Meisenhauser, they're still a law firm, or, excuse me, an accounting firm, but they decided to no longer, uh, audit, uh, school districts. So Sean, which we're so glad he did, decided to, uh, go on his own and still audit school districts, uh, and, and not more than just school districts, but that's what we get him to, uh, work with. And so, as reminded the board and everyone present, uh, school districts are audited twice a year. And so, school districts are audited, uh, their last fiscal year. And so Sean is just showing you what's called fiscal year. And so Sean is just showing you what's called fiscal year twenty three. So right now, we are currently at fiscal year twenty twenty four. Sometimes that's kinda odd because it's not even twenty twenty four, but when they say FY and then that year, it's what year you end with. And so we're currently working in fiscal year twenty twenty four. That's Sean, his crew will come back next year and audit. So he audited fiscal year twenty twenty three. And then the state comes in, uh they're auditors and they audit our, you know, we refer to the September twentieth count. So they see if, you know, from transportation waiting to CTE, which we just talked about, all of that. And then they eventually give us our legal maxes and ultimate funding as well. So Sean's crew comes in and and looks at all of our finances from last year. Uh and I just wanna give a huge shout out to the three ladies that are here, I mean Katie and Kristen and Jenny that that do most of this work. And work with Sean and his team when they're here, but obviously do all of the work throughout the year to make us have a a great uh audit. So uh we are lucky to have Katie, Kristen and Jenny uh handling the finances and me just staying out of the way. Um so uh they do an awesome job and we're very lucky to to have them working for us, so Sean, take it away.
Thank you so much. Um yeah, we did audit the uh school district for the year ended June thirty twenty twenty three. So if you flip to pages uh one through uh three, this is called the independent auditors report. Um here we discuss a variety of items, uh including the opinion that we issued for the district's financial statements. Um the management and the board's responsibility for the district's financial statements, um and then a few more of our responsibilities as well. Uh if you go to page one, the third paragraph down. Nope, uh down a little bit more, right there. Uh the third paragraph down is, there's an italic heading called unmodified opinion on regulatory basis accounting. Uh this paragraph is called the opinion paragraph, so here we've issued an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements as of June thirty of twenty twenty three. Uh that's the highest and cleanest opinion we can give um financial statements in the state of Kansas. So that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management of the district during that fiscal year twenty twenty three time period. Uh the next section forward is uh page four, I think it's called the summary statement of receipts, expenditures and unencumbered cash. Um here you'll see all in the left-hand column, all of the different uh funds of the district in the left-hand column. And then beginning cash of each of those funds, receipts, expenditures and then ending cash. At the bottom of that right-hand column, you'll see the total cash the district has on hand at June thirty of twenty twenty three. The next section forward starts on page five and runs through page eleven. Uh these are called the notes to the financial statements. Um here we discuss a variety of things, including the different accounting policies that the district follows. Um information on long-term debt, involvement in the caperage retirement program, uh budgeted transfers that were made during the year, many items discussed here in this section, as I said. Uh the next kind of big section starts on page twelve and runs through page uh thirty nine. Um and these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that you saw previously in page four. Uh most of these pages have a uh comparison to the previous year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty two. And then any budgeted fund also has a budget column there, so you can see how the fund operated compared to the budget that was adopted for twenty twenty three as well. Um and then the uh final section in that, uh in the bound copy they have in front of you, starts on page forty and runs through page forty seven. Uh this is called the single audit section. Anytime an entity receives and spends seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in federal grant money, it's required federally required to undergo a single. So uh for fiscal year twenty twenty three, we focused on the ESSR funds that were spent during the year. Um and for this uh grant management uh grant uh fund, we also issued an unmodified opinion. Which again is the highest opinion we can give the district for that time period. Uh so that reflects very well on the district meeting or exceeding uh federal state regulatory requirements to spend those ESSR funds. Um that originated during uh the beginning, beginning of COVID.
You know, many years the district, I mean, we're not large enough or we don't have high enough poverty, some of those other qualifiers that other states or other school districts across the state every year qualify for that. So as ESSR dollars go away, uh we won't have this audit. Uh and all ESSR dollars, ESSR three have to be uh in twenty twenty four, so actually by September thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So this is probably the last year that uh Sean will report on this because these ESSR dollars will go away. If you're high poverty, you have enough Title One dollars or or other items that auditors would would do this, so.
Uh so for the fiscal year twenty three audit, we did not have any uh recommendations to communicate to the board. So again, that just shows um financial and internal control man and the management process are are being taken care of by district staff, by Dr. Bearman. Uh by Katie and and the rest of the finance team. Uh last thing I wanna point out is we did have a good audit, Katie and the the rest of the ladies did a very good job of of getting us uh timely requests, all the information that we requested for the audit. Questions for me?
So good audits help with many things, obviously we're um not looking for a bond issue for, you know, a long, long time. But obvious uh school districts are rated, uh you know, credit rating, uh which help with bonds and interest rates. And uh so as our audits have continued to do well over years, our credit rating continues to increase as well. So uh that bodes well for future uh finances, interest rates, just like a personal credit card or personal credit scores as well. So uh that, you know, sometimes people don't think about those ramifications, but obviously you wanna a clean audit for many reasons. But having that and doing well financially also helps with uh future loans, procurements, uh things like that as our credit rating continues to increase. So uh we've received upper, higher credit ratings as well, so just wanted to point that out as well.
I'd like to point out a couple of things. The first thing would be, we spent eight percent less than what we budgeted last year. Our expenditures were two percent less than the previous year, so we spent less as a school district last year than we did the the year before. Our twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three expenditures were roughly three percent less than two years ago. So we've had two straight years of less expenditures. And since twenty fourteen, our expenditures have only increased by eighteen point three percent or about two percent per year. So I'd say Dr. Bearman's done a remarkable job keeping our um expenses in in that home. He's done a really good job of uh his fiscal management of this uh school district.
Especially in the world we're living in.
I think it's incredible.
Yeah.
Well, on the, I mean, obviously still providing uh much-needed uh resources. And when I say that for our teachers, obviously their paycheck and and you know, continue to provide increases and raises. And I know the board wants to continue that and and I know we will work hard at that, health insurance. But all these resources, I mean, everything is, as Stu Bill said, continues to go up in cost, line buses, textbooks, to all these things listed tonight. And so it it it's becoming more and more challenging, but I appreciate Mr. Foot's comments, but also pointing that out that. Uh we are spending less uh in the last couple of years. Uh that's from whether you own a business or in your own home, to to do that and still provide the great things we're doing for our kids has been uh really awesome. And so hopefully that can continue, uh it's gonna get more challenging, as we mentioned, as we saw in enrollment. I don't know how much new money will come in from the state, uh we will tackle that head-on when it gets there. Uh but uh keep our goals uh in line as well, but uh do appreciate uh that, Mr. Foot. Anything else for Sean?
So you don't approve an audit, uh it is the audit, uh and then uh but it goes on our website, Katie files it with the state. Uh it obviously then, as you guys have seen a lot on Code ninety nine, and this audit will go in the middle column. You know, we have two years of actuals on Code ninety nine and then as our budgeted uh in that bar column, so. And then, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, four point three, prom discussion.
Okay, uh Catherine and Adrian are here, so if they wanna come up to the podium, and I had shared this document. Uh so I had met with uh Catherine and Adrian regarding uh prom. And uh then they had sent this document, uh kind of the purpose of some of their uh changes to prom and and then uh four bulleted items behind below that. But before we get into that, we wanna recognize uh Catherine Sifkin because as we said, Cambry is our elementary teacher here. Catherine is our secondary teacher. So uh does an awesome job with Spanish, obviously at the high school, but working very well with uh Cassie Miller at the at the middle school. She coaches, she sponsors. As we all know, we're so proud of the syllable literacy, we would not be doing that without Catherine's efforts. So Spanish five and having kids going to college that that are gonna do great or in the world of work or or in the military as well because of her efforts. So we're lucky to have her and so before we get into prom, wanted to share that as well. So so the board has had this that you guys shared with me and uh so. I guess anything you wanna, you know, touch upon or just uh share and then I'll see the board and you could have some conversations.
I guess if you've read it, that was kind of our point, we um have struggled since COVID with kids coming to school-sponsored events. I see it as the Juco sponsor and as the prom sponsor, it's really hard to get kids to come to things. Um often, there's a better party somewhere else, to be totally honest. And so we want kids to be at school, we know they're safe, we know what they're doing. And we wanted more ways to honor these kids, honor seniors, recognize them for what they have done. Um so many kids do so many things, there's just not enough room to honor them all. And we've been in discussion for a couple of years of why don't we have a prom team? And so we figured, what better way, let's honor some more kids, recognize kids and let's get them to come to our event and it worked.
All right, that was our two goals. Our two goals were to get kids there and to keep them there. Because before, when we went to prom, they would come and they would do the promenade and then they would walk through the dance and then they would leave. So like we changed locations because of this, hoping that more kids would come and then also that they would stay. And like I, last year, I don't think most kids were there and I I looked at my watch, super strange, it was like ten forty eight and then they all like left. Twelve minutes before prom was over, it was super crazy, everybody just mass exodus, they all just left. But they were there the whole time, from when it started till that point. So like we thought that we achieved our goals, the two big goals that we had was to get them there and then also to keep them there. And we did that last year, so we were very proud of that prom, I felt like last year.
The uh main thing I'd heard from students last year is after prom and stuff and a couple of parents was. Everybody thinks this is a great thing to have and it shouldn't continue, they felt, but they were worried about uh only. All only kids going to prom got to vote, some went to post-prom still couldn't vote. And I know all kids can't afford to go to prom, it's more expensive than your other deals and they were wondering, why isn't this handled just like homecoming, Queen of Courts? Cause the same type deal. The ones, I mean, I haven't talked to anybody, cause a lot of people didn't know about this or how it was handled even, you know. But the ones that did, the students, a couple of students were upset because they went to post-prom, didn't get to go to prom and vote. So I think the big thing is, why not be consistent and handle it just like homecoming and Queen of Courts? You know, let the students do, and I I I think I agree with the junior seniors only voting and and doing that, that's good. But that was the, some of the main things uh that they said that uh. You know, and then it takes the burden off the teacher, but they felt that should be handled like it was for homecoming and uh Queen of Courts. And they thought it was, I mean, everybody thinks it's a great deal, I mean.
We thought voting at prom would would encourage students to come, first of all, cause I mean, if we voted before. Well, and even through Juco, Miss Sifkin had said before, like maybe sixty percent of the kids even vote.
Not even.
Maybe not even that. So like we thought, yeah, so we thought, get the kids to prom, that would be an incentive for them, they could vote when they got there.
Prom is just a different event, it's not an all-school event, it's exclusive. Uh we would hate that anyone would miss first the hardship, a financial hardship.
Sure.
Um I've never heard of anyone that has reached out, if anyone were to reach out and say, I want to go to prom.
We would.
We would pay for their ticket.
We would help them.
That's not a big deal. Um last year, actually, I take that back, one person, somebody from the community paid for some kids to go to prom, which is great. If that's something we need to make more well-known, we can afford fifty bucks to for a kid to come, we see the legitimacy of that.
And also I feel like if they wanted to vote and they weren't going, if they came and talked to us about it, we probably would let them, as long as they were a junior or a senior. I mean, post-prom is after the king and queen have been nominated, so like we couldn't do it at that point. But like if they were coming, they wanted to, they just have to have a conversation with us, I think it would be okay, I really do, if they wanted to vote.
Not an all-school event, not tied to a sporting event.
Was it communicated ahead of time that you could only vote if you were at prom?
I think that was the reason you did it was to get kids to.
So I mean, the kids knew ahead of time.
Yeah, you're gonna catch the vote at prom, I think that was even in the the form that we set, I mean, the kids knew. How many juniors and seniors went to prom last year?
It's always around. It was around two hundred fifty, two seventy.
I think we had, cause we usually RSVP like two fifty and I think we had to increase it. So that was, that was like plus one, that could be underclassmen instead.
So that could be, yes, but I was just curious like how many juniors and seniors went?
I mean, it's usually around two fifty is what we usually, and I think we, I think we got up to two seventy, but that was like kids that came from out of district and um underclassmen and they brought in underclassmen, so that was total.
I would say we probably had two hundred fifty, it was for students.
And those out of, either freshmen or sophomores or out-of-district students at prom as out-of-town dates, they get a vote?
The out-of-town ones, no, because they can't, because they can't log in without a Blizzard email.
So that two fifty, maybe two hundred voted or whatever. Cause they had to be our juniors.
Right, right now, it has to be our juniors.
Do you know how many of them voted?
Not off the top of my head, I would have to look.
We could look and tell you, yeah.
And I think the other thing that I heard, and it's that first bullet point, uh is how, and if you guys wanna expand on. Why you you feel like teachers should choose the candidates, unlike the other two uh homecomings that we have, that that's all chosen by the students, so. But I think I heard from the board maybe some concerns about that, so. But they addressed it there, just obviously wanna nominate students that have participated, that have shown great things in the classroom as well. But that is, so really the the top two bullet points and the bottom are the, I think, the crux of this conversation that we just need some direction on.
I guess we just had discussing before my other active like cheering things that the teacher should not be involved in deciding who. You know, being decided and voting and that, and that's what some of these students felt, that uh the students, juniors and seniors should at least nominate. Nominate the ones just like they do for homecoming and Queen of Courts, they should be involved instead of the teachers, what they felt. And then, well, then if they did come to prom and vote, at least they should be involved, the whole junior senior class of deciding the the four finalists. Or who who is on the list, even decide how you do like homecoming and Queen of Courts, don't they have an election? And then four finalists get the most votes or however you do it, do it the same way there, I think that was one of their big concerns too, is just do it the same way there, at least for the voting. Where the students decide who the who the candidates are and then narrow them down to the four or.
On the other two real quick, just and Catherine, no, she's a sponsor, so for the other two homecomings, just seniors select down to the four.
Correct, the entire student body votes.
Just for the four finalists?
For everything, yeah.
Okay, so they vote for both times?
Each club or or sport nominates.
So we send out a ballot only prior to be nominated for homecoming is you have to have a two point five GPA. And so we put out that entire list of seniors to the entire student body. And if they wanna vote, they vote.
Okay.
Um it legitimately, you see people and you're like, well, that makes sense that these kids got nominated. Um we also get, there's a detriment too, we see a lot of if your name is the first four or the last four.
Yeah.
You get a lot of votes because they don't know you. Um some of our freshmen have had like, okay, I have gone to weights and conditioning with you, I. Or I recognize your name because I've been to Lewisburg basketball games or football games before.
Cause what, you do the with the fall homecoming, like we're there for maybe two or three weeks, so those freshmen don't know anybody. I mean, let's be honest, you know, they know the kids that they have seen in a sporting event or they play football, they know the football players. So the top four and the bottom four get a lot of votes just because they don't know who to vote for.
So even though the public, we might not have a homecoming until September thirtieth or whatever like it was this year, but that initial vote.
I like num- number one in how the nominees are are picked. And ultimately, the kids are picking the winner.
Yeah.
So I mean, you're not, maybe they don't have the the final four figured out, but I I and I like the way that you're doing that because you're right, there are kids that should be recognized that aren't. And ultimately, the kids, the students do pick the winner, so I mean, I think there's.
Well, and when we did this, like we just didn't do this, like we did a lot of research from other schools in like past experiences and like. past experiences and like, like I've worked in Drexel, how did we do it there? How did you do it at this school? How does this school do it? Like, we did some research, it wasn't just her and I decided to do this, you know? So, and we thought that it would be, like you said, a di- maybe some different faces, like some different opportunities for students to maybe wouldn't get it if we just did, everybody vote.
Or Shire, Quieter, maybe not the big sports star, but they're on the team, or they're involved in three sports and they're in the band and they do the musical and they're in Scholars Bowl and they, you know, they're a scholar in the classroom. Like the last point there says, the whole staff does it, we all work with all different kids. And so you're getting a big group of people, the kids I teach are not necessarily the kids that Jim Morgan teaches, which are not necessarily the kids that Adrian teaches. So with all of us together, we also work with all of these kids every day in such a wide capacity. And we trust our teachers to have built these relationships with these kids, to recognize these kids who need or deserve this recognition.
And how did the other, how did the staff respond to it? I mean, did they like the idea of nominating?
From everything I've heard, yes, I never heard directly from somebody who said, I did not like that.
You guys are swaying in unison. Yeah, no, I think this is great.
So is it the entire teaching staff that votes on it?
Don't you have teachers too that don't know all students, so and I guess, I mean, you could, I mean hypothetically have one vote for every, or do you all get together?
Lots of student, like remember we had how many girls that were like all the same number, we had to do tiebreakers? Which I think is good, I think that's a good problem, that we have that many girls who are getting votes from the teachers.
I think that's awesome. We had a lot of exemplary students who got recognized. And there's always gonna be students who also deserve to be recognized. I wish we could stand up and clap for every single one. That's just never gonna be the case, we don't have the time, that's not how the world works. I think this, this gets other.
But it's, it's not the.
It's a good, good idea.
I think it's, I, I like it because, you know, homecoming is more of a popularity contest. Who gets nominated? And this is recognizing kids that maybe excel on other areas.
Yes. And that was our goal, that was our goal.
I guess my main concern is I just think all junior seniors should vote on the, I mean, at least how do you say, how did I say it? They get, they all get a say in the four finalists. And then I can see then coming to prom, let them know that you're coming to prom, but actually get to vote, but at least some way they be, should be. But I see you gotta nominate so many of them, maybe if you have, I don't know how you did it, if you had eight, let them pick the four finalists or did you have three or four finalists?
That four.
Four, yeah, do something there where the whole class is involved in that and then they only get to vote though, if they're, they're because.
But if the kid's not worried about getting a vote, they just need to go to prom.
Yep, I agree.
If you let them all vote, it take, it throws back into it being a popularity contest versus letting it get more, you know, different, meaning different kids.
We had prom, king, queen, I was, it was prom, king and queen, or the Micah King and King and Queen. How, whatever they called it, but it was announced at prom and we voted at prom. And, and I don't know how the, the people were nominated. If it was, I think it might have been the teachers, but it was two, in my class, it was two kids that didn't participate in athletics, you know, but they were
Good kids.
Good kids and good students.
Wonder when that stopped, because we definitely did not have.
We had it, but I mean, this is beyond ago. Did you guys have it, Rob?
I don't.
I had Shaw, but and she said, hey, you didn't have it. Uh, you had, you had homecoming, king, queen and queen of courts. And nothing, that when I was in school, all we had was homecoming, queen, no kings.
That's what, when I was in school, we only had queen and our senior year, we added king again for homecoming.
And then we had a La Micah dance, La Micah dance in March, that took the place. I think that's what they did, where that did Queen of Courts, I think after that.
Catherine's been here ten years and so she knows that haven't had it for ten, I mean, I guess George will have to look in your books to see how long.
And I think that that was another reason why we wanted to do king and queen, so instead of just like eight girls being nominated throughout the whole school, school year for like fall and winter homecoming, now there's, you know, there's more.
Twelve.
There's twelve, right, and then there's more girls that deserve it. We know that, like we know there's lots more than the twelve that deserve it. And the boys too.
Everybody a crown, let's go.
Participation medal.
I think this is great, it's sad to me that not more kids want to come to prom.
I feel like everybody went to prom.
I know, it was the fame vaccine.
We're trying to make it pull again, and that location that we had last year was, oh, it was awesome. It was beautiful, the kids loved it, I mean, there was stuff for the boys that necessarily don't love prom to do outside, like they could play cornhole, like there were some things where they could, yeah.
There's a patio with fire pits, there were video games upstairs, I think.
I think, I think it's great, cause I know my two oldest, they went to prom, got their picture taken and they were.
They walk right up to it.
But I think.
And that's a general thing.
Right, the, the more participation you can get and keep them there, I think is best.
And we have that event center locked in for at least three years.
Five years.
And there, he's an alumnus that not quite, I don't, what is his name? Like, like, yes, and so he's very open to, and has cut us the deal, he's awesome. And wants us on the books, and so he's gonna save us those prom dates there we can get in and.
Yeah, he is, he's a great guy, and he even like kind of reached out to us, he was like, I built this location thinking about prom, like he was gonna go and do that for us, so.
Because if he had a wedding, he would make a lot more of this.
One hundred percent, yes.
Probably five hundred.
And you said it's communicated well to the students, that if they come to prom, that's the only way you can get the vote.
It was communicated.
Is there a way that maybe next year, because a lot of parents or kids didn't know about that, if you communicated that to parents, that the only way they're gonna get the vote for it, that they would maybe get more, more, maybe they would encourage their kids to go.
All email, whatever, all call to all juniors and seniors, that could be something we could totally add.
Did it go out in the parent email? It went out in her. Okay, that, cause that would. And it went out in the weekend parent email, I think we probably told them, I don't know how.
Because we were worried about the whole parking situation and promenade and we're not at the same location, so we sent out lots of emails. I think we sent about three times, honestly, through Skyward to all the juniors and your parents.
Do, do what was going on, okay, okay.
We can totally add that to the email, like just, you can only vote if you're at prom.
Yeah, dude, that way, maybe, I mean, at least they know then.
Yep.
So it's just a discussion item, I guess if, if the board collectively, I mean, it feels differently, I don't, I didn't have it as a vote, but I mean, we need.
Man, I don't think we need to.
Does everyone feeling, I mean, truly those four bulleted items collectively is the board supportive of that so they can start planning or?
I think it's good to go.
I think so, I mean.
I get your points, I do, I just feel like, I mean.
That's the big question, why can't they do it? The ones that, the two that complained to me students were the ones that went to post-prom and didn't get to vote, because they didn't either have a date or they, maybe they didn't feel they wanted to spend the money for it, but they felt they went to post-prom, they felt they should have got to vote. That was, that was the, the big complaint.
Yeah, I guess you just, you can't please all of it, I guess.
I like that.
Since prom's up there, one thing, and we work together with Dr. Van Rine and his sponsors, on transportation, you know, we don't allow students have to ride student or school transportation. And so we provided buses, of course, it was the first time out there and no kids rode those buses.
Did you, would you have three kids riding?
Yeah, I.
Like parents drop off or limos or?
And so we have to view prom, or in my opinion, now the board tells us differently. In my opinion, we have to view prom out of that event center, just like going to Paola on a Friday night basketball. And either those kids are on the bus or we have written permission, those parents, and we did not have that this year. Thankfully, we had no accidents coming back on that calf or anything like that, but, so we are gonna have to do a lot better job that you're gonna ride the bus or.
So if we have a permission slip that goes out in this email per se, that says that they can drive home from prom.
We're driving home, because we would not allow a kid to drive home from a Paola basketball game, they have to be with a parent or guardian. So to me, we need to treat it, it's a school function off our school grounds the same way, but.
I see what you're saying.
That's right.
Like if you were like the athlete participating in the basketball game, not just the spectators.
The only two options, if you, you could sign out and go home with a parent or guardian, or you ride the bus home. What we had is we had parents, maybe at four o'clock on a Saturday dropping off a vehicle there. And then the, the kids after prom, after the crowning, they drove their vehicle back to town. We would not allow that in any other activity. And I mean, is it a pain or are kids not gonna like that? Yeah, but it's a safety, I mean, that calf at nighttime and. Yeah, it's just a narrow road, so I would, you know.
Could you have, drop them off by limo or however they do it, but they must ride the bus home?
And see, that's another thing is they, you know, they take, after First National, they go take, you know, their limos and buses. So parents have the cars there, the limos and the party buses dropped them off there. We thought they would ride the school bus, but yeah, I had a big bus and.
So what if, can they ride their party buses back or no?
Well, they're gone because they're not gonna pay that, they're not gonna pay the.
The thought that they're a participant of prom and that's why you are trying to restrict that?
Well, I mean, we do it for every other event.
They purchased a ticket?
Same as practices.
For softball or whatever, they have to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess that's why I asked that is, I mean, the thought is that they're participating in prom, like you participate in a basketball game.
It is a school sponsored event.
It's just not athletics, Mr. Ybar was here, he has a debate tournament, forensic tournament, same process for those at BLA. Uh, so it's, I just think we need to be consistent and.
Are the buses like running?
There was no issue with that.
No.
No, I'm just wondering, I mean, it, it's not, you get on the bus, even if you walk out the door at ten fifteen, you just sit on the bus until eleven is over.
We had planned that Mr. Bearman was going to do like different routes, like he would take different time, like ten twenty, take a group and then come back, and then ten forty, take a group and then come back, but time doesn't prompt start.
Eight to eleven, and then they have to be at after prom by midnight. And that is something, of course, not school sponsored, school supported, we provide to high school for free. But our attendance at after prom has been horrendous and so I don't know what parents are, it sounds like they're gonna continue to do it, which I fully support and believe it's a great thing. Rob was doing security and he's texting me like, where are all the kids? And I told Rob, they're not coming. And so that's a lot of work our parents do for very few students that attend that. So, I mean, that's.
Time to change.
Yeah.
It seemed like it was long to me.
I think it was too long.
A lot of kids left throughout the night, instead of, I think if you make it shorter, it might be.
It's like a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty kids at a.
Yeah, it, it started strong. But at the very end, where they do the prizes and stuff, there wasn't hardly very many.
So maybe like three hours and start four hours.
Rob, I think you guys did it till, we, we did it for you guys when it was five o'clock.
That's what I felt like.
I mean, we dealt all night long. And kids were sleeping on the floor and it's a back.
All right, well, we appreciate it and. Thank you guys, come on.
That's how we didn't even mine, but I don't think they call it that now.
Okay, you know, now it's winter homecoming, because they have a king and queen. Um, okay, action items, five point one, for board polls.
Yeah, I kinda chunked this into three different ones, so the first one would be to, and we discussed all these policies at length before. So the first motion would be to approve the updated policy BBBF, which Jenny has up there. That is what the board's wishes that even though there was legislative action, that school boards could be paid. Uh, this board wanted to put that in BBBF that they would not be. And then the other is LCC, which in business with Chief Weber, was that all city and county codes may be enforced by local law enforcement. So I know last month, it sounded like there wasn't any conversations, but that was just, or any concerns about these two. But that was a discussion, so they have been moved to action.
I've got questions on this, the city, I don't know, maybe the laws have changed back in the nineties and early two thousands on private property, if there was even an accident, the police could not be involved in that on private property, is that? But maybe the laws have changed since then, cause there used to be an accident on that price chopper and the police were called, come out there and said, we can try to tell you what happened, but legally, there's nothing we can, they can't write tickets or anything like that. I don't know, things, maybe the laws have changed now and.
Yeah, I mean.
How's it handled now when the, is this, is this mainly for when we have events or for during when the kids are at school?
Right now, we have in our handbook, so our students are subjected to this and that's why we have the signs saying all county and city codes are enforced, but any adult is, you know, so from staff to visitors to, you know, visitors from other school districts. Uh, because it is private property, unless we have this in policy, according to Chief Weber and the city's attorneys, they can obviously, you know, I don't know if it was a huge disturbance, I assume they could do something. But this allows them to have jurisdiction right now, uh, it's because it's in Dr. Van Rine's handbook, which is board policy. But that just pertains to students.
It's only for students.
Yeah, so this allows for, uh, support if we needed. But as far as, I, I mean, I don't know for sure, I'm not definitely an attorney or into law, but I would say things like your price drop or even at the high school, if we had an accident, I know our police are going to respond and investigate, ask for footage, potentially write a citation, so.
It'd be interesting to know how they, how they could handle it, maybe the law would change too since.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
I just wondered why they wanted to do it, because they had some instance where they probably needed to.
And they couldn't, because there was no policy, board policy that said they could, to support us.
But, but they can, but students can be tickets to this day.
And we already have that, because that's in your handbook, which is.
It's just the bias to non-student.
Non-students, that we currently, the law, the police don't have any rights and jurisdiction over that, they will now.
I move to approve the updated policy BBBF and approve the adoption of policy LCC.
It's been moved to approve, moved and seconded to approve the updated policy BBBF and approve the adoption of policy LCC, is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Those?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Suderville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Oh yeah, still a second, uh, the second one is a resolution, which is today's date, eleven thirteen, twenty twenty-three. This is regards to the hearing and the legislative action about non-resident students, JBCC. So we had discussed this, this is actually the official resolution that the board will be approving in this motion. And so obviously, we've already had non-resident students, uh, this is probably a bigger item of discussion in districts that have had closed enrollment before this law was passed. Uh, we still, next semester, and we'll get guidance from KSD and legal and probably like Green Bush or service centers, will have to have capacity conversations, so how many students, how many students in a building before we can deny non-residents enrollment. Once again, probably not a, a big issue, especially with our decline in enrollment, but we will nonetheless have to have those conversations and, and further of action items next semester sometime. So this isn't that granule, this is just to adopt the policy, and the policy does talk about how the district will create district capacities. Those will be procedures and not necessarily policies that are supported by policy JBCC.
We have a motion.
I move to approve resolution one, 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 three, two, zero, two, three, regarding policy JBCC.
It's been moved and seconded to approve rev- resolution one, 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 three, two, zero, two, three, regarding policy JBCC. Is there any further discussion?
I just got one question, do we get any funding? Did we discuss, are we gonna get funding for non-residents?
We get state funding.
If they're, yeah, if they're Kansas residents, so obviously not from Missouri anymore. And you get it the following year, currently, unless the legislators change that, but we do not get current. So if a student from Paola first attends here, we would get funding for that student if they came back the following year.
Aren't they going to revisit that?
They are, and the growing districts to the north of us really want that, uh, but that did not pass. They are, and the growing districts to the north of us really want that, uh, but that did not pass last year, so.
Is there any further discussion?
What?
Yes.
Boz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Suderville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the last item under board policies, uh, we discussed uh policy JGCA, uh, which is the, I mean, I was. The physical education policy, if you can scroll down, nothing has changed any of this, uh, except the bottom, I, I was tasked by the board. To work with Mrs. Apple and, and uh, Mrs. Crater and staff, and so they've had conversations with their staff. And really, the conversation is, the two options below, I, I believe the board kinda said, well, maybe bring us back with some potential. Options as conversation starters in tonight's meeting, so what's in yellow is currently in the handbook, that would be potentially. After board action, what has changed, so uh, Mrs. Apple and staff work together. What I have gotten gathered from conversations that Cindy has had is uh, teachers at uh, at the elementaries, they, they. They don't wanna take recess away, in fact, I think they said that last time, but there are certain circumstances and times that. Just, you know, teachers feel like it's, it's prudent that a recess uh is a potential good consequence for that student. That they don't wanna be a regular basis, as either of those options say, uh, and it doesn't have to be, you're not necessarily proven either of those options. We can work something and put it together, but the task at hand would be to. Change what's in yellow, which is current policy in JGCA, either go with option one, option two, blend it together. Uh, but there was extensive input uh from the staff uh regarding those, so. Guess I'll turn it over to the board and.
What is the uh consensus, which option do?
Cindy, you wanna come up for the podium, so.
I'm a spy.
We have Rebecca here. So the last one, and then it was option two, that was the one that was just sent to me, but Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think um. The second one, I think, is the one that building leadership team kinda came together with, with Rebecca, this wordsmithing um on that one. Um, just because we wanted to be very clear that we are, we are using all other options. And we don't want that to just be the go-to, you know, I mean, we've spent several weeks now without having any, you know, recess taken away things. We're, we're still teaching, like, we're still, you know, everything's still going on and it's strong, but there are just a couple of those instances where it's like. It's not the only thing we can get to motivate this, this kiddo, you know, uh.
I'm gonna ask you this, Cindy, real quick, so. By either one of these options, would you, would this, would the teacher use best first?
Yes. Yep, and even before that, just some, like, you know, talking to the student, working with the student.
So would, would, which do you think is better, I mean, going, using best first or using this first?
Oh, best first, because best is all about um, really coaching the students on what skills they need. And not just giving it, you know, a consequence.
Okay.
Um, and I mean, I think that's what it means by, you know, like, every attempt will be.
So this would be the last resort?
And these are like more isolated incidents.
Yes, like I had a parent that was like, can't you just take their recess? So I think good, but I want them to be responsible too, something, you know.
I think my opinion of either one of them would be that it needs to say that the parent would be notified prior, if we're not talking about this being a. Like, to notify a whole class of kids that they're getting the recess taken away, that we would notify the parent prior to.
And it does say that in the first option.
Or, I guess, but it doesn't say that we would.
But that's pretty hard to do, isn't it, I mean, if it's a moment deal where they've been having problems and all of a sudden it comes up again.
Unless, you know, it just, I mean, we. We already talked with them and, you know, I mean, that would be something we would say, you know, if we can't get this under control, we might have to. Take practice with them during recess.
Last week I had a teacher call me about this in your school and said that they had a couple of boys that worked on, doing whatever it was, they're always doing. They said, okay, then during recess, you're gonna have to find it, cause they kept saying for days they couldn't find it, she said, well, then I guess you're gonna miss recent. Part of recess until you find it, you know, within a minute, they had, had went and found it and brought it back to them.
Amazing.
And went out to recess, it was, it was that much of an influence that they immediately went and found, they knew exactly where it was, they were just playing the game. And whatever it was, they had to find, and that, that, just the threat of that, it was, it was a done deal.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I think I lean towards one, uh, the only thing I would change would be, I would say. Yeah, I think I should say building administrators will notify instead of encouraged to, I think that's, leaves it too open.
Yeah, and the only reason I started that is because that was our existing one.
Sure, but I just, you know, you just leave things open to interpretation and you have problems again, we don't really wanna have to revisit this.
I agree.
So it's gonna say building administrators will notify, we're gonna strike are encouraged to.
They're gonna notify who, I'm sorry.
Oh, so the start of it will say building administrators will notify district staff, and then. Anything else after that.
Couldn't you put the same thing in two if that's what they want? Yeah, but the, the thing I like about one is it says, or agreed upon by teacher and parent, I mean, that way.
But if you added that wording to the.
Or you could, yeah, you could move that down to the second.
Is that, are the parents always gonna agree to it? And I guess, what were some internal conversations, Cindy, cause you first sent me that one. I did write that, I wrote two others that I just sent, and then you sent me all of them.
I think the, the one agreed upon by the teacher and parent, I think that was kind of met with some. Um, opposition only because they felt like we have done everything else, um, you know, and. I think sometimes it is implied that, I mean, we do partner with the parents quite a lot, I get copied on. Lots of emails where the teachers are reaching out to the parents to discuss their concerns, um, and so I think they just felt like, well. It doesn't have to be in writing, like, do that, you know, but then I also understand your point of making sure.
I think you get a lot less pushback.
That it's, that it's in there.
But I mean, maybe we move the, or agreed upon by teachers and parents down to option two, cause I like option two. Um, because every attempt will be made to encourage students to meet expectations without the loss of recess minutes.
It, I feel like two reads better.
I do too.
Yeah, if you.
Yeah, and I like that only one other option has been tried.
Between the teacher and parent, or, you know, something about.
I, I think it needs to say that the, the parents would be notified.
I, I agree.
I don't know that it has to be necessarily like agreed upon, but that, that the parent will be, is gonna be notified.
Before that it's happening or that it happened?
Before.
Well now, how you gonna get home that day if you need to do it? Wait till the next day to punish you?
My understanding is these are very isolated incidents.
As I say, I think it would be something where, um, hey, I've tried this, I've tried this, I've tried this, if Jimmy, you know.
That was a good kid.
Jimmy is gonna continue with these behaviors, I think I'm gonna have to look at, at, you know, using Jimmy's recess.
But you're not asking their permission, are you, I mean, you can't ask their permission or you're never gonna get it, I mean, some are gonna say, yeah, do it like Jim said, some are gonna say, do it, some are gonna say. No way you're gonna do that.
Are most gonna say yes?
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I think, like I said, if we have gone through every attempt, you know, uh, what, what else can we do?
I just think as long as, I think it just in there saying that the, the parent will be notified, and that, it doesn't have to be, I don't think we should put a timeline that the parent needs to be notified that day. Could have been that the parent was notified the week prior, that if this behavior happens again, that this will be the consequence.
And I get, I get it's hard to have anything open-ended because, you know, you're gonna encourage me, well, you know.
Well, what about the situation where the teacher told me that that day, it was the deal that happened for three days, well, they, she thought they'd have it back that day. Said, okay, then the threat of that got it back there, well, you don't have time to get it, so then you gotta wait another day. When they need to do whatever it was, so you gotta call the parent, I mean, you're not gonna get a hold of them that day, I, I just.
Right.
I, I just don't like the parent part myself.
I, I don't care for it either.
I, I just think, uh.
These, these te- we have to hold these, these teachers are responsible for our children only, and we have to trust that they're going to do what.
And the parents, we're giving control of the parents more than letting the teachers do what they do.
If they're, so if they're, you know, um, uh, pushing the envelope and not being, you know, not using all the other attempts. That's on me then to monitor, you know.
I, I, yeah, I, I just think it'd be up to the teacher and then you, okay, you went, you know, maybe you should have in this case. Context. I mean, I just don't like the fair part either. But if we could at least notify the parents through email or something, that, that, that this happened.
Right, and that's all I'm asking is for, I, I think it needs to say that the parent will be notified, I don't think it needs to say the parent's gonna be notified.
Before.
Like, I mean, think, send an email at whatever, that, hey, Jimmy is not gonna get to go to recess today. I mean, if you have any questions, and then it's happening, but the parent at least gets notified.
So option two would read, building administrators will notify staff members to withhold recess from students only when other options have been tried. Deemed impractical, next sentence will stay the same as well, but then it'll say parents slash guardians will be contacted about this decision.
I can move that.
Yep, I think we can.
I mean, most of the time, it's not a full recess anyway, is it, it's just like. I mean, they're pulling them aside for five minutes and, and.
They can notify the parents, just eliminates them coming at us.
It's been several weeks that we've been doing this, and we really have not had a lot of.
Well, I.
You know, where.
I'm sure that.
Using other methods and it's.
No teacher wants to spend the, that recess time just between a child, they'd rather be having a break.
Yep.
But sometimes. Best for the whole class, and you need to have a conversation with that kid. Cause it's taking away.
Part of this is finding the time to really process them.
I prefer to have a private conversation with the student.
Sure, and then you're taking your teaching time away from those other kids too.
That's the really hard thing, if I can keep a kid from this first, usually it's two or three minutes to process with them, it's a private conversation. With that individual student and then after they get shown.
I had a teacher that used to make me set my tech, my desk outside the door of the, on the fire escape.
Didn't you just say you were a good student?
Yeah.
I, I think my dilemma with this and with us voting is I'm in favor of option two, but I don't think the parent piece is necessary. So I think that's kinda where I'm getting a little twisted up is. I, I like option two way better than what's highlighted in yellow.
Well, I see what it hurts to send this to the parent an email, saying.
I know, but I, I, I mean, maybe after the fact, sure, but I don't think it should be necessary before it happens.
I will say honestly, though, we're already like notifying parents, like, hey, your child was moved to the refocus seat or the safe seat. So they are, are, are already getting, that, that would not be additional communication on our part.
Hey, I think it's, I think it's better that, that it comes from the teacher, bef- before little Johnny gets home, we're gonna, we're gonna pick on him. Instead of Jimmy, before little Johnny gets home and has, you know, and maybe has embellished the story of what went on. But if I get an email from the teacher saying, okay, little Johnny was doing this, this, and this, and when little Johnny gets home, he's gonna. Hear it from me too.
Yeah, and they're gonna move.
Instead of little Johnny coming home and said, well, I lost recess because of.
Well, my Johnny's not gonna tell me he lost recess.
Some of them will, but I think it's always good to hear from the teacher what exactly.
Well, that's fair, yeah, that's.
I think, I'll just say, I think I would not have a problem, in fact, I almost always, I can't say always do, but I almost always send an email to parents if I had to. Keep the kid from recess. Most teachers probably do, so I.
I want to know what my kid is not.
And that's why I'm saying, like, we, like, honestly, we would say, just wanna let you know, Jimmy got sent to the safe seat, I'm picking on Jimmy, I'm sorry. Jimmy got sent to the safe seat today because of X, Y, and Z, we talked about it, and he was able to rejoin the class, and, you know, I mean, we have.
Or he wasn't able to get it and he lost five minutes of recess or something or whatever.
So, okay, so I guess back to, cause your concern was it being before it happens, but now it's kinda, I mean, I think we can come to a happy meeting.
I think Jennifer's fine as long as the parent is notified.
But once again, that first part, and obviously, and they can take a motion and they can die, or they can, but, so let's say, building administrators and I'm striking are encouraged to have. And that's gonna say building administrators will notify staff members to withhold recess. That reads the same all the way to the very end, and then after minutes, it's gonna say parents slash guardians will be contacted about this decision. And I just wanted to review that, so, and that's one.
I think it's a very workable policy.
So can I motion to say what you just said without saying everything you just said?
Just say with suggested changes.
Okay.
I move to approve the updated policy, but what was suggested change?
Go ahead, I gotta get to the right screen.
It's J, it's JGC.
JGCA.
Yeah, JGCA.
Okay, I move to approve JGCA with the suggested changes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
I moved and seconded to approve the updated policy JGCA with suggested changes. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanna make sure we're not making it have to do it before.
It doesn't say that, it just says that it would be, they would be notified.
I just wanna make sure that the. Read message is that they don't have to do it before they do this.
It just needs to be communicated to the parents.
That, I, it's just, doesn't sound like that's gonna be the first time that that parent has heard from the teacher, that's if we get to that point.
Probably, yes.
And that can be in probably the first email that goes out about their original behavior, so there will be, yeah.
But?
Yes.
Boz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Suderville? And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman, yes, motion passed.
Okay, five point two, approved updated classified handbook.
Okay, uh, Kristen, if you could come up to the podium, so, uh, you know, this is Kristen's first uh board meeting, and so I think you go on to her, but uh. She obviously, just like Jenny and Katie and everyone else in the district wears many hats, and so she officially is the board treasurer. Uh, so she works with Katie and Jenny, and obviously we talked about it, the financial audit, but she does and helps with that. But her main job uh would be HR, human resources, and Kristen has done a great job coming in for that position. Really trying to fine tune some areas, uh, not that we were deficient in anything, but she's, she's a workaholic, very, you know. Wants to, to make sure we have things uh right, cares about our staff members a great deal, and so in viewing our classified handbook. Classified is hourly, which well over half of our staff members in our district are hourly. Uh, Kristen just came to me and said, you know, I think there's some things that we need to update, we need to change, there were other things that we were doing. But weren't in the handbook, so just kind of a variety of things, and so she's highlighted those, and so after Lydia's basketball game in Paola, I asked if she would come back. And uh, share these with you, so I didn't, uh, and then next will be the same thing on the substitute teacher handbook, so Jenny has sent this out, and uh, so. We'll just kinda go through all the yellows, so Kristen, take it away.
Okay, so we're, the thing that we've striked out, we're just not gonna follow anymore, we would like to not follow, and say hourly staff members have a building level. And or building director, principal supervisor, hourly staff members should know the organizational structure of their position in the school district. So what that is, is that's who is approving their time, so if they put in time off requests or their time sheets each week. That's who is gonna approve their, their time that they're getting paid for. Okay, this is for our um custodian staff mostly, like, right, Dr. Berman, we also said that if we were to hire, um. Did it affect the kitchen staff, what wore it used to, no, it wasn't, they're just custodians?
Yeah.
Okay, so we put a ninety day probation on our custodians when they come in, and that was not in the handbook before, so we wanted to add that, so that. The reading was there.
And they are able, as it says, to receive health insurance so right away, it's the other benefits as far as, and very common. It's the other benefits as far as, and very common even in, in, uh, corporate, that, you know, sick and vacation, some of those don't start including right away. But then also the voluntary benefits, so, like, they want a cancer plan or disability plan, all those things, they, so we do cover them, health insurance right away. There might be a little lag, cause usually their first health, their first, uh, paycheck covers that premium. But not ninety days.
Right.
And we also know a lot of hourly staff are coming to work for us for health insurance, so we didn't wanna hold that from them. So, but we are currently practicing this, this was just not in the handbook.
And that's just the website changed, so we updated that. And this was. So we just changed the wording on this one a little bit.
Sick leave.
For sick leave payout.
So what we had is for sick leave, and we have some great hourly staff members worked for us for a long time, and, uh, our teachers and contract employees have always said that if you worked for us for ten years, they get paid. This used to say, as you can see, that after ten years of service of the district, unused sick leave is paid at the rate. So we used to do that if they left. This one, though, we cap our other employees at ninety days, and so we had some long time staff members, you know, twelve month employees, custodians, that the only way they're ever gonna get paid is if, once they left. They didn't have what's in yellow there, which is what's in my contract, what's in our teachers' contracts, that no one can get more than ninety days. So as they get more days, if, then they get paid for those. What it said before is just the top part, that only, you had to actually retire or resign after ten years to get paid. We wanted to treat our hourly staff members the same as we're treating everyone else, so. That's, so some of the wording's the same, but the biggest difference is that ninety day cap that now they qualify for. Cause we had a long time custodian last year come to us and he wasn't gonna get paid because it didn't say that in there. It felt like, I mean, just like anyone, if they're here not using their days, that's like a teacher. I mean, that's good that they're working and not needed those, uh, those days. We don't want staff members to abuse these, so this is just an incentive to pay them for those, uh, days unused.
How many sick days do they get?
So it depends on the class. It depends on if they're custodians or aides, there's a different, there's a chart for each separate class, classification.
So a twelve month, uh, custodian, you know, off the top of your head?
I don't, I don't, I have it in my office, but I don't, I don't have to fill that memory right then.
No, that's right. And then like after so many years, does that number increase, or does there vacate? Cause I saw on that audit that they get ten days vacation, and it wasn't like stair stepped or anything, so I was just curious if.
No, it's not. Below, um, we've had Martin Luther King Junior Day has been a day where, so the third Monday, the district is fully closed. We just did not have it on here. And then if you've heard, uh, now Kansas is going to honor Juneteenth Day. And so, um, that is gonna be a day in June that will be a paid, uh, holiday for all the district. Last year, the feds, uh, recognized that, Kansas didn't, but now Kansas is recognizing that federal holiday. And so, once again, Martin Luther King Junior Day, we just happen to have it in classified handbook, we've been district closed for years, I don't know how long. And then Juneteenth was just added this year. Then Jenny, explain this part.
Okay, so, um. I didn't, I wanted to take out that for capers, because it's not just necessarily if they qualify for capers. They have to work a minimum of thirty hours per week and are considered full-time employees. So it doesn't have anything to do with capers, so I felt like we needed to remove that.
Yeah.
It has more to do with how many hours they're working for what they're, they qualify for.
And then this on the premium, once again, we've allowed this for hourly, but we didn't have it in the handbook. We allow this for our, uh, contract, so a teacher administrator retires, moves that, say they're sixty-two, but they need to be on health insurance for three more years till they hit Medicare. We've allowed that, we've allowed it for hourly, but it wasn't in the classified handbook. Uh, then they will pay the entire premium, so right now, like, our HSA plan is five hundred, our three thousand dollar, uh, deductible PPO plan's like five seventeen, so that staff member will pay that entire premium. Uh, we have a third party administrator that handles that premium, but, which is still cheaper if you're sixty-two, sixty-three, you're still are getting that. Even though now you gotta pay the entire premium to go to the marketplace at that age is gonna be more than that.
So that's their option to do that if they want to.
Yeah. And then, you know, we allow retirees to take all our voluntary benefits, uh, so from dental to eye.
Yeah.
We have still, uh, still former employees, uh, doing those as well. Yeah, there's, there's one more, oh, no, several.
Okay. Yep, so we put this in here, we've been requiring this, it just was not in the handbook, and we're kind of having a hard time implementing that it has to be done every time, so we wanted to add it so that we can say reference back to this. You, you know that you're required to do this, so.
So those are beginning of the year, that all our staff, and so they're obviously serious employment, uh, trainings. They are sexual harassment, bloodborne pathogens, bullying, uh, you know, all of those that I know as staff employer, you guys might wanna make sure that they are completing those. Skyward banks those then, so we can see when staff did them, when they concluded them. And so those are annual, so, um.
And it prompts them when they log into Skyward, so it's not, I didn't know I was supposed to do that. Anytime they log into the system, it tells them that they need to take those, so. They are getting that notification, it's not us just calling the same way I haven't done this. They're getting the notification every time they log into Skyward. Okay, overtime pay, so our system calculates that, uh, I had them take out the, and overtime applies to the holiday work week, because the way the system calculates it, if there's a holiday on the, the work week and they work Saturday, they get paid for that eight hours, but it's not overtime, because they already had a day off during the week that was a ho- paid holiday. So it doesn't pay overtime pay, it just pays regular based salary pay for that Saturday if they would work that Saturday.
And once again, we were doing that, even though it said that, and so, be Martin Luther King Junior Day, so that would be a paid holiday. And if one of our custodians needed to work Saturday at Broadmore or L R C, then that would be straight paid, unless they went over forty hours.
Right.
Uh, now, the first part is different, we still pay, so if there's, like, this week, five days, and they have to work Saturday, they are gonna get overtime for working on Saturday.
Yes.
I think that's it.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the updated classified handbook as presented.
A second.
Been moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the updated classified handbook as presented. Any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Those.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Studabel.
Yes.
And Tinsel.
Yes.
Goodman, yes. Motion passed.
All right, now we have this substitute teacher handbook.
Yeah, and, uh, obviously, we already heard it takes a village, and it truly does, cause sometimes some things, some concerns come up that, uh, do need to be looked at, and so I appreciate, uh, Mrs. Goodman working with one of our subs. They're definitely another unsung hero of our district that we don't have enough of, and are probably underappreciated. Uh, so if you wanna go to the yellow, what are, and I, we, we are working with a sub who actually started last week. She's gonna be doing two long range, uh, uh, subs, so let's her read, uh, in yellow, uh, what it used to say. So this sub's concern, and, you know, just like anything, until a concern's brought up and you kind of go through it, cause all I know I've done since I've been here is just, I've updated those rates of pay, like, maybe when I started, it was eighty dollars, now you see we're up to one twenty, and long term. Well, this sub is, has four children, she was concerned that if she has to take one day off, you can see your, the current policy says she's starting over. So she is going to lose, uh, four hundred dollars, cause she would go back to one twenty, and it would take her ten days to build back up there. She actually has two long-term, uh, sub replacements at Broadmore back to back, so she's gonna accrue a lot of days. The second thing is, why wait till the eleventh day to pay them? We know they're gonna be long-term, just like we know this, uh, sub is starting last Thursday already. They've worked through the principal, we've advertised that. When you're a long-term sub, you do have more duties, and you are that teacher of record, uh, working more in grading and communicating with parents, sometimes are able to communicate with the teacher, other times not, depending on the teacher situation that you're subbing for. Uh, so, uh, Kristin did survey our principals, our principals, uh, do support striking this as well, uh, to pay those long-term subs day one at a hundred and sixty, and then if they do miss a day, that they do return still at the hundred and sixty.
This will only apply to people that are, uh, that are filling in for teachers that are out.
Yeah.
Long term, very long term.
Yeah. Kristin has met with this parent, it's also a, a sub, and, and I think, you know, obviously, she knew the process that we'd be discussing it tonight. Pays not till November twentieth, so, uh, if the board approves this, she will, won't be affected negatively. So, uh, when I, I said honestly, it's like any big policy or handbook, I mean, and sometimes it just takes, uh, some attention to these matters, and walking through it, and it definitely makes sense to us, and, uh, definitely value our subs.
Yeah, the one thing that I would say I would like to see it specify is what a long-term sub is considered. Meaning, how many days are you signed up to be considered a long-term sub? So is it one through ten, and you're gonna get that one sixty rate for one through ten? Is it you're signed up to sub for at least fifteen days? What, what is, where do we wanna set that at? What do we wanna consider a long-term sub?
I would say we can still do what we're doing there, so it's if they're subbing for ten or more days.
Ten or more days, but I just wanna definitely put that in there, what that number is, so that we have that to go back on. It's not, somebody calls and says, I'm gonna sub for eight days, why can't I get the long thir- long-term sub pay, so. I just wanna specify exactly what they have to make.
Saying in the same position then, and that certification?
Yeah.
And then everything else, we're not striking, but, uh, you know, the first part, and if you've read through it, really is a handbook as far as what the reporting process, paying and everything else, all these other items are primarily resources. So we're just going to have a resource tab on our website. Michael is the, so it used to be Scott Hinkle would work with our subs, now Michael does help training, and so he would still share all these that are, so we're not taking any of these out. It's just, they really shouldn't be in the handbook when it comes to like employee, employee law and the do's and don'ts. These are just, and, so if it's yellow, obviously, like, purpose staying in there, but some of these other things, they're, they're just resources to help, uh, substitute teachers that aren't trained teachers, go through there, like, it gives options on how to de-escalate a child and, and different things like that. So still sexual harassment will be in there, so as Jenny goes through there, what is highlighted yellow, none of it is leaving, it's just gonna go into, except this one, I'm not, okay. Because we do, uh, I mean, our dress code is, uh, pretty loose, and so if we were, I mean, our teachers are allowed to wear blue jeans, uh, and so we probably, you know, can't have a stricter dress code for our subs than our teachers. We do ask our teachers to dress professionally and appropriately, but, uh, so, once again, Kristin going through.
It just wasn't in the other handbook, so I didn't feel like Mr. Catherine thought this one, just didn't feel like it should be in this one specifically, because it's not in the other handbook. So why do we have it in the sub? So we just wanted to make them more uniform.
They don't have to show me, but we have, like, a list of, like, duties for, like, long-term sub versus regular sub, it's in there somewhere, I don't need.
In here, and it's not in the handbook, but the principals did all reply to my email, cause that was one of my questions. Do they have to put grades in? Do they have to do all these things that the other subs do not have to do? And there is a list of things that they have to do.
And so once again, these are all resources that will not be, uh, removed totally, they'll be put on the resource tab, and as Mr. Pickman was with onboarding our, staff or subs, we'll visit with them about things. So just to say, and then that would be it, so to summarize, what you would be approving is obviously the, uh, the sub rates, and we discussed the dress code, and then all of this just be going into a resource tab, uh, for our subs.
One more thing, Dr. Bierman, going back to the long-term sub being up to ten days or making it to ten days, and you're gonna get that rate of pay, do we want to pay them that one sixty from the beginning? Or do we want to pay them the one twenty, and if they fulfill the long-term sub time, then we go back and we pay them that other amount? In case there is somebody who doesn't continue on with, you know, if they call in, or they decide they can't do it, but yet we've been paying them the one sixty rate?
That's a good question.
That is a good question, yeah.
I think maybe.
So we have to, like, like, make it ten, the ten days, and then if they fill the ten days, then I get the back pay.
The back pay.
Like a probationary period, yeah.
Uh, just something, you know, so people don't sign up for it to get that pay, but then not fulfill the full duty.
Eighth day they decide they.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
And most of the time, they're probably, it's gonna work where you'll roll that payroll, they won't, but know that, depending on when they start and when the next pay cycle is.
Sure, well, and you may decide they aren't the sub for the situation.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that adds another clear, that then who, that would not be the teacher, the person quitting, that would be them getting fired enough soon, can we not pay them if we, the one sixty, if they.
Yeah, we want it, then they would not get that, especially if they hadn't fulfilled their ten days, that would.
But even, I guess, if we're stopping them from fulfilling it versus them choosing not to fulfill it.
Yeah, they would, if they had met the, up to that ten threshold, that we could just keep with.
But if that language we would need to put in there, that that said, like, if we, you know, deemed that they were, like, unfit to.
Yeah, to continue in the position.
I think it would be fine to say they get that back, as long as they get that back pay, as long as they fulfill.
Right.
That ten, I think that's, I think that's fair.
If they're performing in the position.
But like you said, I think, probably most of the time, that's hopefully not, not affect payroll, it's probably on the state paycheck.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we're only paid monthly, so.
I mean, maybe not.
If it's at the end of a payroll, I mean, it just, I don't know, it was something that I had thought about. I, you know, I don't wanna pay somebody one sixty when they should only have been getting the one twenty rate, cause they don't fulfill their full duty. You know.
Yeah, so when they hit that, then we'll just back pay them.
But I guess, just what if they, in that ten days, they have to call out a day, then that just adds to the end of that, they don't do that all over again.
Yeah, we take them eleven days.
Correct, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Like you said, the sub, great point, I mean, wants to sub, she has four children.
Yeah, and she's doing two back to back, so it's a long timeframe.
Someone will be, someone will be sick.
Kids get sick.
Yeah. Jenny?
Any other questions on that one?
Real emotion to approve.
I move to approve the updated substitute teacher handbook as presented with modifications.
A second.
Been moved, moved and seconded to approve the updated substitute teacher handbook as presented with modifications. Any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Those.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studabel.
Yes.
And Tinsel.
Yes.
Goodman, yes. Motion passed.
Okay. Yes, I'm gonna move, we take a recess and, or the board will reconvene at eight fifty-five.
Second.
Moving second and taking a recess, convene at eight forty-five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
We're not gonna need other computers for the rest of the day.
My bad.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at nine twenty.
Second.
So moved and seconded to go back into executive session. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Announcements, next regular board meeting will be December 11th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a...
I move to adjourn the...
November 13th.
November 13th, meeting at 9:41.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the November 13th, 2023 regular Board of Education meeting at 9:41. Any further discussion?
But...
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Studville?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
I didn't say anything there, but I heard you a little noise.
Sarai, you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Goodman? Yes. Motion passed.
All right. Thank you, Sarai. Be careful.